Okay, good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, July 26th. This is the Selectmen's Meeting. This meeting is being recorded on Whitman Hansen Cable Access Television, and I hope you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we have a jam-packed and very interesting agenda this evening. I'm gonna try, in the interest of folks that are here, to take things out of order so that we don't torture everybody by having them be with us. But I've just been reminded that I'm getting ahead of myself and that we need to do public announcements.
Public announcements?
Yes.
The town clerk's office will be opening at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, August 1st, and Wednesday, August 3rd. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, and Recreation Commission. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, or by calling the Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. Upcoming meetings, Select Board, August 9th, 2022, and Select Board, August 30th, 2022.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rain, and I'm sorry for
I would not be there for the 30th.
Oh, okay.
I'll be gone.
Okay, so I was going to try to start with you, Mr. Pushing, about Lakeside, but I really like our building inspector, Mr. Glass, to be here. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna... You were really towards the end, but I was gonna try to prioritize that. If you folks don't mind, we'll start it off with Impressed LLC.
Awesome.
So, welcome, and if you guys don't mind just introducing yourself, telling people who you are, and about Impressed LLC, just for folks that may not be aware. And if you don't mind coming up to the podium, I'm sorry, it's not my rule, it's Whitman Hansen Cable. Hi. We have a couple of new Select Board members who I don't think you folks have had an opportunity to meet. So we've got Mr. Ed Heel.
Yep.
And we've got Mrs. Ann Rain.
Nice to meet you as well.
And I'm hoping that at some point, I know I'm kinda putting you guys on the spot.
Anytime, you know.
But I would love to have them go and suit the facility so that they have an idea of what we're talking about.
Now you gotta get gowned up when you come into the facility, so.
Oh, we gotta put the hazmat suit on?
Just high tech suits is all we have to make.
Okay, all right.
Well, nice to meet you guys and nice seeing everyone. I'm Ally Greenberg. I'm one of the owners of Impressed LLC. Currently, we only have a cultivation license that is commenced. We have gone through our provisional license for manufacturing, but we have not received that yet, the final license. We're 90 days into operation. We're growing, and that's really all I can say about it.
That's amazing. So I know I had mentioned to you guys that people are very anxious about, well, when will we start seeing revenue? And when do you start, you know, sending the product out and all that good stuff? And, you know, if you don't mind giving us an ETA on that, would be awesome.
Well, it is in your host community agreement that the terms don't start until we actually produce some revenue. So I haven't seen any revenue, I'm just growing still. So what we expect, honestly, first harvest, let's just say, early September.
Okay.
Go through all the testing.
Yep, yep.
Make sure it's clean, and then hopefully get some money back to the town.
All right, well, we're excited about that.
I know you are. I'm excited, I'm trying, I can't grow it fast enough.
We need money. So you're here.
Ralph, do you wanna come up and say hello?
Yeah.
Yep, Mr. Greenberg?
And we also have Nick Gomes here, our attorney, just to be his legal counsel in case there's any questions. Hi, everybody, I'm Ralph Greenberg, Impressed LLC's co-owner. We're excited about this opportunity to be in front of you and another opportunity to create some value with the town and for ourselves. It's a long road that we've started this on together, and we're at a point that cannabis is growing in our building. The markets have dropped since we first started, I just want you to know, 50% minimum since we started this. So by the request of this delivery license that we're looking for today is a real opportunity for us to make money at this point. Without that delivery license, you know, we'll be brokering our product to the wholesalers, and that market is a very, very tough market.
So can you, just for folks who may not be up to speed on what the delivery would be? It's not a brick and mortar?
I'd like Nicholas to take over, if you don't mind.
I don't mind Nicholas, but if you could clarify, because I think at town meeting when this was discussed, there were a lot of misconceptions and ambiguity, and, you know, doubt grows where there's ambiguity. So I think one of the things that people were nervous about is, wait a minute, is this a brick and mortar retail? We said we don't want that. And so if you could just explain, you know, what that entails.
Nick Gomes.
Good evening, members of the Select Board. My name is Attorney Nicholas Gomes, and I'm here today representing Impressed LLC. I have an office in New Bedford, Fall River, and Boston. So the reason for coming here today, I was invited by Impressed LLC to give you a little bit of information about the new license types and what is going on. From my brief interactions with Impressed LLC, it is clear that they are passionate about this community and their operation. Cultivation is the core of their business, that's creating the commodity. And what they are essentially seeking to do is to add the delivery operator license type. Now, the delivery operator is a license that allows them to warehouse and have products in storage. So this could be them taking from their cultivation license and bringing it into a safe, secure vault, and now it's under the delivery operator license. From there, they can make direct sales to consumers through delivery to their house. Now, of course, they need to be first identified to make sure that they're over the age of 21, and proper procedure is required before the delivery is made to their house, but that's the short gist of what the business type looks like. Now, by the numbers, the reason why this is a beneficial license for Impressed LLC in the town is because it is allowing Impressed LLC to not just grow its flower and sell it to wholesale purchasers across Massachusetts. Now, rather than here, just for numbers, the average price of a pound of marijuana, the large sum, is about $2,500. Now, when you look at the consumer purchase, an ounce of marijuana is about $250, $300. Now, when the town is looking at getting their 3% community impact fee, the commodity itself is sold, of course, for a higher value retail. Now, the difference between what Impressed LLC can sell its flower for on the wholesale market compared to what they can do on the retail market, the retail market is going to be at least a 50% markup from that wholesale value. So here, the easy math is they can sell an ounce for $150 wholesale, 155, versus selling it at a retail level of over 200, pushing to 300. So it's about a 50% value there that you're seeing. Now, Impressed LLC is seeking to operate the delivery operator with further conditions, assurances that the town is looking for. So here, we all know the big, major issue with the retailers, especially at the early stages of the market, was the rush. It's filled with lines, traffic jams, and a mess of issues, depending on the type of location and the practices of the establishments. As an attorney from the city of Fall River who diligently monitors this cannabis market, I can inform you, one of the worst offenders, Northeast Alternatives, based on its Rhode Island line for retail purposes, to this day, you know, still gets traffic, but it is nothing in comparison to like the green rush back in 2018, 2019. And the reason is there's more retail. But that being said, the company still respects the decision by the town and the townspeople not to have retail and not to have a storefront. This model of delivery operator has the bonus of allowing the town to share in on the higher value for retail while eliminating those concerns that are there for retail. No individuals from the public would ever come to the facility of Impressed LLC. They wouldn't be allowed in if they tried. And here, there's no walk-in purchase available. All transactions mostly occur online through phone applications, the comfort of someone sitting at home placing an order. The idea is to get to a point where they can call, and then the delivery driver's going to them right away. But the reality of what we see now is order ahead, day ahead ordering, because this is a logistical business. It's whether you're delivering cannabis, laundry, pizza, whatever it is, it's logistics. You're spending money on gas. And here, it's generally grouping of orders as you can to, you know, get your market, be as fast as possible, but it needs to make sense logistically at the end of the day, money-wise. And to do so, the strategies are essentially grouping the orders and creating routes. And even for some, such as most likely the circumstance for a rural community of Hanson, is your deliveries per day are most likely going to be focused on which communities you're going to serve. So here, with Hanson, if they are going to not make deliveries inside the community, if that's what the town is seeking, is to prevent the consumers within the residents, I'm sorry, within the community to get the orders, that's fine. It's something that we can work with, because the communities around the surrounding area, there are sufficient locations where we can go and still have that market and really capture it where others are completely not. And that goes to the social equity and economic empowerment aspect of delivery licenses. The exclusivity period for three years, which I believe started in April of this year. So we've got three more years to go where individuals who meet that characterization have an early jump on this market. So the benefit to Hanson is also fulfilling the statutory duty that the legislature put forward of bringing cannabis here in Massachusetts and carving out this narrow exception for social equity and economic empowerment. So that's a positive thing that the community can be proud of in the future in making that potential vote. So why I'm ultimately here today is to inform, educate, answer any questions you may have, as well as the townspeople as well, and further to look optimistically to the future in how we can make delivery work for this unique community. Every community's needs are different, I understand that, my client does. And looking at the last meeting, in the minutes of that meeting, it's clear that most likely there were individual voters who were somewhat confused. There were four, I believe, marijuana articles grouped together. It's always hard to get such this large information out there. We're talking about combining two sections into one, and then three new concepts, that's difficult. And what I would propose is to have another meeting in the future where delivery alone can be on the ballot or the warrant. And as a representative of Impressed, we can show up to the meeting, give a presentation on what it would look like, roadmaps of the areas which we'd be delivering. And if the determination for the ordinance to be approved is that there are no deliveries in the town, then that's a condition that I believe could be incorporated to meet the needs of the town, allow my client to conduct business with this extra license type, and then everyone can have the mutual benefit of the increased percentage of the community impact fee. So I'd open it up, any questions?
One of the first things that I know everybody's gonna wanna know is, how do you ensure that the people that are purchasing online are not children? Because that's the biggest issue, is letting the kids get their hands on the box. That's the borderline.
Yep, so here, I would say the benefit of the delivery process that the state has come up with is numerous contact points for verification.
So the state has come up with the procedure?
So having the, yes. So similarly, how the cannabis is tracked from the seed to the flower to the ultimate sale, that seed to track, that seed to sale tracking software is showing that it's going to an end consumer and that has to be 21. So here, the identification of the person needs to occur at one of the retail establishments in Massachusetts so that someone has physically been inside of an establishment, their ID was verified, this information is captured. The businesses keep this information for their own internal records and then have the matching up of when their orders come to them, it's placed, when the product is placed into the vehicle, and then on its way for delivery. There's two delivery drivers in the vehicle, all on camera, every direction, as well as the outside, and body camera footage. The individual who is making the delivery gets out of the vehicle while one person remains in the vehicle to make sure it's safe, full alarm, audio, as well as alarm system. And then when they proceed to the person's house, they need to visualize that it's the correct address, that the, and the system would make sure that they are allowed to make this delivery in the first place. So here, this is making sure that the car hasn't already been to try to make this delivery to this person in that particular day. The person is visually put on the body camera footage as they are identifying the information on their card. It's matching up with our internal system that the driver has access to. It's okay to make the delivery. And then also, I should mention cash, which is another general question that arises. Cash is completely separate from cannabis, and online is what everyone is promoting. So although there is opportunities that the law would allow for cash transactions, it's generally narrow in scope because of the debit processing systems. You essentially have the mobile unit to do the card, then, if not already done, online.
But nobody, in no event would anybody ever just drop something at a locate, like, it's literally person-to-person identification, complete chain of command type of, you know, down the line.
That is accurate, and it's all on camera footage as well. It's required to have for 30 days plus, generally 90-plus is the standard that I see. Any incidents that occurred, there's reporting. This vehicle, if it stops at all, it's monitored GPS. And if there's any unusual stopping, it would be triggered and alarmed. General, the general parameters of the business, I should have started, is there's always eyes and ears on this vehicle and the entire operation back at the headquarters. There's an individual monitoring the vehicles that are on the road. Here, this is a small operation. The design is to be able to sell the product that's being grown. So here, we're gonna have low volume of actual traffic on the road. Every vehicle itself is allowed to have $10,000 worth of products, which is going to keep that car busy for an entire day. So this is not going to be cars in and out, in and out. It's more so car going out for either a half or a full day and returning only once or twice.
Unmarked vehicles?
Unmarked, completely unmarked. Advertising as well, these vehicles aren't gonna have any markings on them. The idea is to have as energy efficient as possible. If they can push forward for electrical vehicles, that is what they are going to incorporate, if not on day one, into the future to meet the state's environmental standards that they're looking for, as well as unique vehicles, or to the extent that we're not going to have a fleet of the same vehicles so that perception-wise, this is not easily trackable from someone who observes what's going on on the day-to-day. But those who are generally, the nosy neighbor even, watching what's going on next door, it's going to be tough for them to determine exactly what has occurred. And that is because we wanna be as discreet as possible for the benefit of our clients, but as well as for our business model. The less showmanship, you could say, maybe it's not as good with the consumer for marketing. I'm sure they love to have someone with a hip t-shirt show up, and it's gonna brand it and just be something cool. But really, that's not what we're going for. It's more of undercover, logistical, smooth operations.
So people, hopefully, wouldn't be able to discern whether it was DoorDash or marijuana delivery?
Yes.
Or Instacart or marijuana delivery?
I would say that is correct. The one distinguishing cue would be if a entity was to use a rather cheap body camera system, which is easily recognizable compared to some more advanced models. But yes, that's generally the cue that would be given away is they, it's required to have a body camera. But other than that, it's plainclothes individuals on the road.
And is there a cap on the amount of marijuana that can be delivered to any one location?
Yes, per day. So on the, they are going to receive flour, an ounce, or concentrates, five grams of concentrates. That's what the individual would receive on a single-day basis. But the next day, they could call again.
Mr. Heel?
Joe, I know you had your hand, but first question, because I heard you say the consumer would have a card?
Identification, driver's license.
Okay, which is already on record at a retail establishment somewhere in Massachusetts?
That is correct.
Okay, so delivery couldn't be made to someone's house that hasn't already purchased?
That is correct. They're going to have to be in-person identified before they can get the delivery to their house.
Okay, and then you also said it's only one delivery per day. And then to follow up on Laura's question, it's only one ounce that they could get per day?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that.
Mr. Weeks?
Yeah, no, so for me, I think when it comes to this issue, you're gonna find that there's three separate camps of folks. You have people that really do not want marijuana in this town. You have people that absolutely want every form of it. And then you have a bunch of people in the middle that wanna make sure that if it's here, it's done responsibly. And I think that's what pretty much everyone's working with, that's what you folks have been presenting. I was going through this, this is gonna be the third board worth of signatures on this if we go through with this. So I think, you know, at town, whether it be town meeting or in public hearings, I think that the middle camp is the one that we wanna be able to speak to the clearest, because they're not against it, but they wanna make sure that, you know, it doesn't fall into the wrong hands and that it's monitored well. Everything you just said sounds fantastic. What I'm curious about is, is how do we educate folks by essentially presenting everybody with a clear process and procedure about how to ensure that? Because it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to actually have it in writing. So I'm curious if that is available, whether it be through Mass General Law, the Cannabis Control Commission, within the own policies and procedures, can we have something in writing that would give a level of security and predictability and accountability, essentially, to everybody that's kind of on the fence with this?
I'm sorry, just to build on that, town meeting, I mean, I'm trying to find the words, but fiasco is what really comes to mind. It just, we tried to do too much, and it became very confusing, and people were mixing apples with oranges in terms of what was trying to be done. And at some point, I think it just felt insincere to people there. They felt like maybe something was getting pulled over on them, and it just was not handled well. So we have learned from that, and we will not make that mistake again. And what really was missing from that dialogue were facts. And I think that's what Mr. Weeks is talking about, is we need the facts. We need to have a very clear, you know, here's what the protocol is, and I don't know if you're even permitted to, but, you know, here's what we think it would mean for increased revenue projections. You caveat and put all kinds of disclaimers, but tell us something, you know, because people were banding about all kinds of numbers, saying stuff like it's $10,000 a year, and it's like, that doesn't seem right, but we didn't have anything to counter that.
But I would just add to that, I wanna turn, and I'm not saying that this isn't written down, I just don't know enough about it. So for me, it just comes back to words are words until they're actually, like, until they become facts. Like, anybody can get up and say anything. And I've been on the board long enough that you seem like you always follow through, you always seem like you're, you do what you say and you say what you're gonna do. And I appreciate that. But I think, you know, we represent everybody from all different opinions. So I think the idea is hearing people at town meeting, trying to do a bunch of different things, just be, having constituents come up to you on a regular basis and give you their opinion. They're all valid. So the idea is, how do you lessen that anxiety around it? How do you give people the ability to hold folks accountable in case? You guys might be the best, the best company in the world, but all it takes is one bad, shady type of thing to cast a shadow on all of it, right? So how do we ensure that the town is gonna, you know, validating their decision, but also making the right decision in the future for what's best for their town, their kids, their community, all that stuff? Can we turn words into facts? And again, it might already be in Mass General Law, but I think a lot of people are gonna watch this video, a lot more people are gonna come to the public hearing, but you gotta convince everybody at different points. So I think having it in writing is just helpful.
So the community host agreement amendment, which if we, if this progresses and everybody on the board says, yes, we would entertain this, we would bring it to town meeting. We would, let's say we brought it to town meeting. Then the next step would be, let's say, optimistically that it passed, then you'd be having hearings. Now, I think what you're saying is, prior to that, can we get something in writing that outlines the protocol that you've indicated?
Yes, and thank you both of you, or everyone, for your insight today into the meeting and your specific community and the members' needs. I commend you for what you do, as well as the difficulty of the moderator's job. I'm sure, speaking from experience, how difficult it was with these new concepts. But I will speak with my client, and what I have in mind is, my general thought process would be to send a formal request to the board, requesting your support, having a warrant, a general item put on, in specifically detail in a memorandum format with citation to the Code of Mass Regulation that the Cannabis Control Commission came up with, with specific excerpts. And that's the key, because is the regulation difficult? No, sort of, yes. But when you're able to point it within five, 10 pages, it's right there. You don't have to zig through an entire 10, 100-page stack. It's a little bit easier, it'll be clear, and I'll include the roadmap of what the steps in the process are, the projections that we anticipate. But I think the most important safeguard and assurance for the town and the townspeople is the fact that if the client messes up, there's repercussions at the local level and the state level, and any, anything from a car accident is going to be reported. Never mind the larger issues that are the worst and the fears at night is the diversion, the theft, those larger items. So yes, there is, and I will point out the factors that the state's gonna look at, getting someone in trouble, but the license is on the line, and that's so important to these clients. They have so much invested, it's the last thing they would give. So the last thing I wanna say before I go is that my client appreciates the opportunity to be here tonight. Is glad to hear some positive support in the inquisiveness of getting this done the right way. And I'm committed to stand with my client, to assist at the meetings, and be an ear and mouthpiece to anyone who wants to come and ask any questions.
I think your plan sounds great. Did anybody else on the board, Mr. Heel?
I just have a question. You mentioned about that there was the opportunity, the option of having us to say, or the town to say, you can just don't deliver to Hanson, deliver everybody everywhere else, which, great, that's a good option if that's what it's decided upon. But given that, are there other delivery services that are delivering to Hanson today? So that you not delivering to Hanson is not gonna help us by saying, okay, the guys right next door can't deliver to us, but the guys in Marshfield can?
Yes, I agree, and I would bring those positions and try to persuasively argue against them. But I am sincere in reciprocating what my client told me, that they wanna work with the town, they've invested so much in cultivation already, they see the mutual benefit, they just are trying to make it happen.
Mr. Weeks, and was there somebody else who had?
It wasn't me, but I think you answered the question. I was looking more for an itemization, more formal presentation for town meeting. You guys kinda answered the question, and I think you did a good job explaining that today. I just think it should be on paper so people can actually see it.
Yes.
Totally agree.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna be flying by the seat of our pants.
The follow-up is, are there towns right now that are saying, no, you can't deliver to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Could you tell us which ones? I mean, around us, locally?
So I would say, I believe it's the Bridgewater's, everything on the North Shore from here. And then, I know Plymouth is okay. And then there's some surrounding closer to your friendly on the West Side, but that's it.
To put a different way, are you aware of any town that has this similar model, who has carved out delivery to their own town?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I do not, and it's, I do not.
Just to piggyback on Ed's, I'm just kinda curious, 'cause you just brought up a really good point. Are there any, do we know of any, I don't even know how you track this, but do we know if there's anybody that's already delivering to us? Because the real issue is, from a taxation perspective, is there might be towns already delivering to us, we're just not getting any money for that. So the marijuana's already here, it's already being delivered. here, it's already being delivered, so I just wanna kinda work this out in my head. Is there a way to A, track that, B, if we're, if we're losing revenue? So if town's already doing it, we're losing money?
Let me just, I don't think, it's my understanding, the town voted to prohibit retail originally, and that's how it passed. So that puts you in the protected position where other delivery companies from other communities that allowed delivery, you put a border around yourself, they can't come in here, they can't do that.
That's what our legal counsel told us, yes.
So you're secure from that, but you're in the unique position where you could still allow delivery and say no to retail. That's what I was answering your question.
Okay, so we still could carve that out. Mr. Cushing?
So, quick thing, so Solscher Buns, they're in Marshfield, they're across the street from one of my offices, and you know, they talk about now delivering to Quincy, Fenway, Back Bay, Seaport, et cetera. My question is, are they delivering to Hanson?
No, that's what he just said.
Yeah, I would say no.
They're not allowed to, because we, because we voted no on retail, that puts like a, like almost a firewall around us for anybody to deliver, 'cause that would be considered retail in Hanson.
And to piggyback off that, I mean, I can tell you from a personal perspective, I watch Solscher Buns on a daily basis, I'm there, I thought the place, there'd be traffic, you know, and there really isn't, I mean, it's no different than any convenience store. I watch them on a daily basis, I really thought when they went in there, they would be like, it's not.
No, I drove by it the other day, on my way to Roach Brothers', and it's very cleverly designed, the windows are frosted, it's very, you know, like you really, you wouldn't know who's in there, doesn't look like a shady operation, you know, so, yeah.
It's just something to think about, and I think that, you know, Hanson, you know, I'm one of those guys in the middle, as you were talking about, Joe, like, you know, I don't care the way, but you know, it should be done tastefully, and I just think that Hanson should, in the end of the day, it's gonna happen one way or the other, and I think that if they can, you know, absorb some, you know, get some tax revenue from it.
But again, we're not looking at a retail establishment, yeah.
The bottom line is that this has to be done so that the kids are not able to get their hands on it. That's the bottom line of, I know the hardcore people, I understand them, I, I go back and forth and sideways on it, but the most important thing is, is that it's gotta be secure so the children can't get their hands on it.
That really is. At every town meeting where this has been discussed, that is the hue and cry, is, we don't want this to get in the hands of the kids. And so, a lot of what you've told me is, I think, really, you know, really responsive to that. Clearly, the regulations have contemplated that, it's very well thought out, and it's so highly regulated. That's why I really would love you guys to go and tour the facility, because your mind will be blown at how regulated this industry is. I'm in a compliance role at retirement plans, but still, you know, I'm all about the regulations. I could not believe, like, I just couldn't believe how stringent the rules were. Did anybody else have a?
I just have one more question. This is just more for like a regulatory ask. So if another town wanted to deliver in Hanson currently, right, you're saying that there's like a protective bubble over there, how would, how would they know that it was being caught here? And the reason why I'm asking this question is because I'm just curious how strict and how stringent and how on the ball the current system is in place to ensure that these regulations are actually being followed.
Yes, so this falls back to the seed-to-sale tracking software, where it needs to show where it's ultimately being delivered to, who it's going to, and then that system would trigger that it's not allowed to make that occur. So before the packing occurred, it would already be stopped.
So is it fair to say then, that if, if somebody in some commission somewhere knows that Braintree just delivered a package to a house in Hanson that it's not allowed to do, then if we allowed it in this, in our own town, there's that much of a safeguard to ensure that it's not going into the wrong hands?
Yes, and I think if there was a, a public records request, we should be able to figure out how many times Hanson was logged as someone wanted to actually make a purchase, but it was blocked in the system and they couldn't. I'm sure that's available to the state, but it's not something I, I know or have seen.
Highly monitored then, I mean, really, and it's backup, it's provable, you can actually gather data on this?
Yes, and that's a great point, and I'm gonna look into how I can establish that for you in something on writing.
Thank, I appreciate it, thank you.
Why don't you all try to buy something and see if he hits him with it? That actually is.
No, it's actually a good point, that's a good point.
Okay, we're out.
I was actually gonna ask Ally, because Ally, you said earlier that September is gonna be the first one, and it needs to be tested, do you need volunteers for that?
Actually, I do have a serious question, and I wanna be proactive on this, because I don't believe the state is gonna allow certain towns not to, maybe we don't have to have retail, but they're gonna want every town in the state of Massachusetts to be able to have delivery service, because it's taxed, and the state is gonna make money. And I wanna be proactive, and the way you just explained it to me, that if we did have that at town meeting, I don't think it would be a problem.
I don't either.
That it would get through, but what I'm afraid of is, if we're not proactive, some other people, and I trust you two, we've worked together since the beginning, since the start of this, and to let someone else come in that I haven't worked with and that we don't know, that...
It would be unfortunate.
Exactly. So I wanna make sure that, you know, that we get the word out correctly and that we do have it done, so that someone that we have been working with over the past four or five years, that we know, and that, you know, you guys have gone above and beyond everything that this board has asked.
We haven't changed a bit.
Exactly, and that's why I would hate to let somebody from Plymouth or Quincy or Marshfield come into the town.
But here's the thing, if, if we have this umbrella that protects us from other people, and we, but we allow delivery of Hanson, you know, in Hanson, does that break the umbrella?
I would say, yes, and then others would be allowed to compete with your Hanson operator.
So we can't exclusively say it would only be in Prest LLC?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that's something for us to contemplate, but I don't think it changes whether we want to work with the Prest LLC. Yep, okay, Ms. Green?
I just have one question. How does medical fit into all this? So if you have folks who have their medical cards, and they purchase the medical cannabis for their conditions, think about the people who can't leave their homes to go and get it. How does, how does medical fit into this?
So my client is adult use or recreational, medical can have deliveries. So if someone is a medical patient who resides in your town, it's my understanding that they would be able to get the delivery because of medical, and it's through a courier license. So there's two delivery types, delivery operators, the warehouse model that we're talking about, then the marijuana courier is just the delivery service. They don't make any money off of the actual commodity, it's just bringing the vehicle from the retailer, either recreational or medical in this instance, and driving to the consumer's home. And also notably, in the marijuana courier model, the licensed delivery marijuana courier, they are not the one who made the product, they're not on the side of making the money on the percentage like we are trying to present to you with a delivery operator. It's, it's really just a service just to carry it from point A to point B, where the delivery operator is much more lucrative, and I would go as far as saying, the model that's being presented to you with an independent cultivator, such as Impressed LLC, with the delivery operator, is the dream for the small business, so that they can compete with these larger vertically-integrated operators who already have retails that are earning revenue, and they can easily put a billboard from Boston to here advertising delivery, so this is a true way to help out a local resident like the law was designed for.
I think it's also a dream for the town, who doesn't want retail, wants the revenue, wants to support this, and wants to maximize the revenue, it's, it's, there's really no downside, as long as, as Mrs. Rain has emphasized a couple of times, that we can be assured that it won't get into the wrong hands.
As a lifelong resident of a small rural town, 10,000 people, I can commend the town of Hanson for what you did in step one of approaching cannabis carefully and reasonably, allowing cultivation, making sure there were no odor control issues, starting with that revenue, and then proceeding potentially into delivery, where I know some towns, they scared to ask the questions, were given misinformation, and they just complete prohibition across the board, and they're missing out. And every single year at town meeting, we're fighting over a few hundred thousand for the school department, when there's some money that could have been helped out by this new industry.
I just interject on the town manager's question about medical, we can still deliver as long as they're an adult, 20 and older with a license, and we can still deliver to that patient. It doesn't necessarily have to be a medicinal cannabis company to do that, our 21 and older recreational business will deliver to them as well.
But they would pay tax on it versus if they get the medical delivery.
But they'll save on the carbon footprint by being in the town of Hanson, saving a gas.
All right, so next steps to try to put, Mr. Healy, did you have something?
I, yes, I don't wanna, I don't even know that I wanna ask this question, but I'm hearing two kind of things. I'm hearing that they wanna apply for delivery, and then also delivery within Hanson, and do we wanna have a thing where we did last town meeting where they were?
Well, that's something that we're gonna have to deal with. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna solve that tonight, I think we need to have more conversations, but what I'm hearing this gentleman say is, he's going to get us something responsive to what Mr. Weeks asked, which is bulleted protocol that will be followed, we're gonna get some projections, and then we can discuss as a board how we want to approach it. And it may be that we propose two town meeting warrant articles, one that eliminates the delivery to Hanson, and we outline what the pros and cons are there, and one that includes delivery to Hanson, and we outline the pros and cons there, and then we let the voters decide.
And I think they would be probably best able to help determine the pros and cons of that.
Yeah, we really need you guys to help us get that information, and so it sounds like you guys are willing to partner with us on that and, and get us the information that we've requested. This has been incredibly informative, I think really honestly of all the presentations we've had, or maybe it's just, you know, because it's repeated enough, stuff is starting to sink in, but this was very informative and illuminating in terms of the delivery model, so we really appreciate that.
And with the blessing of the town moderator, I'd be happy to prepare a present, a short presentation to go over at the town meeting even.
I think he'd be amenable to that, but we'll definitely let him know about that. Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, so...
Will you accept them, Mark?
I try to maintain some control over the meeting, some decorum, but it just goes right out the window. Okay, thank you, guys, thanks, take care. We have, if you guys don't mind, we just have a little Lakeside issue that we need to discuss, and then we'll move on to the school issue. We have a jam-packed agenda this evening. Okay, thank you, and so, to put us in the Wayback Machine, about a month ago or so, we had some concerned citizens come to speak to us, they had put together a petition, but quite honestly, we would've talked to you without the petition, and just know that, nobody has to put together a petition to be able to come and talk to this board. Just raise an issue, reach out to us, and we'll try to work with you. Nevertheless, we had a petition and saying, hey, you know, a fence has been erected between Roller Coaster Road and Lakeside, and it's an impediment, it's safety issues, maybe violates building codes, people were concerned, I heard one woman who was particularly concerned about her health conditions and the ability of the first responders to get there. We had, unfortunately, Chief Thompson, that particular evening was actually on call at a fire, but Chief Mix, kind of representing both, said, look, in all honesty, I cannot stand before court, if this gets played out, we were to be sued for this, for trying to interfere on private property, 'cause I should mention, this is on a private way, not a road that's been accepted by the town, and Chief Mix said, look, we've, Chief Thompson and, and I have told our staff, we've told the ROCC dispatch, everybody's aware, we don't think it's gonna impact anything, we'll do our damnedest to, you know, get there and not have, you know, have minimal impact, and he said, I cannot tell you that this is gonna be a safety issue. I was a little bit surprised, but I, I support the chiefs in doing their job and I, in their professional opinion, and I think if we had heard differently, then perhaps we would've taken some action, but we did not. But we did say at that meeting, let's see what we can do, because I, you know, I don't wanna say no until we looked into it, it was the first time we've really ever had anything like this, at least this board, presented to us, and so, we asked the town planner and our building inspector, do you have any ideas, is there any thing that might be getting violated here, are there any, you know, issues? And I know shortly after we had asked if they could look at that, I believe, Mr. Cushing, you had written a letter, I believe it was you who wrote the letter, right, to the building inspector?
Yes, on behalf of myself and the petitioners.
Well, I wanted, I wanted to actually get Mr. Glass to come up and...
So I have a meeting at seven, so, and there's a few people here that wanna speak, so what I just wanna do is...
Okay, but I mean, I'm in charge of the meeting.
Yeah.
So, so what I'd like is to have Mr. Glass come up for just a couple minutes, and we'll try to respect your seven o'clock deadline.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Good evening. Yes, Mr. Cushing brought in a petition signed by 44 of the citizens in town, we talked with town council on this and got their input, I can read what he has said, because of the complaint arise under the zoning, it is my opinion that the building commissioner, excuse me, should act on it here, because the complaint is based on a bylaw, and that bylaw was the 220, 250-foot driveway rule. We found that that did not apply to this, though, the state declining in enforcement because the bylaw is not applicable. In such letter, the building commissioner should state that the appeal of their decision is to the ZBA, because it's a zoning issue.
All right, so basically, town council's saying, you don't have any jurisdiction here, this is not in your purview.
Correct.
You need to kick it over to ZBA, and they need to have a hearing about this.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Glass. Mr. Cushing?
So, so I apologize, I didn't realize we were going in a certain format, and I apologize by Miss Chairman, Chairwoman, but the only thing I wanted to say was, in regards to that bylaw, you know, I had brought that up originally, you know, so we either gotta call it a street, or we have to call it a driveway, right? So there's no, like, there's no in-between, we determined adequate access on ways, the planning board most recently determined adequate access on that way for Mr. Curtin, so it's either a way or it's a driveway. So my position on it was, I submitted, you know, a violation, you know, as a resident of Hanson, to the building inspector, in regards to, if you wanna call it a driveway, then we have dead-end street requirements. If we're not calling it a street, we're calling it a driveway owned by the residents, then there are dead-end street requirements. So in my opinion, when Mr. Olson created that fence, he created a dead-end to Roller Coaster Road.
Just a reminder, we're trying not to mention names, I know it's difficult, but...
It's public record, I'm sorry. Mr. Olson, I'm sorry, 252 Lakeside Road, put up a fence and created a dead-end at Roller Coaster, and also created a dead-end at Lakeside Road. So we talk about private property issues, I would say that those, by doing that, he made these, this non-conforming situation down there more non-conforming, even though it's a private property issue, the job of the ZBA is to enforce private property issues, and that's why, you know, it got kicked from our building inspector to the ZBA, because we enforce private property issues all the time. We tell you how far your house has to be up the street, what your sideline setback has to be, you know, how much frontage you need in a way. We enforce private property issues all the time.
Okay, so you don't have an issue with the response town council gave?
I do not have a response, I do not have an issue with the response town council gave, as a matter of fact, it was expected.
Okay.
And I knew that it would kick back this ZBA, in all honesty, I mean, that's their jurisdiction, and I think that that was the proper board to be looking at this situation, to do what he did is a bad precedent to set, I said that before, I never thought that the selectmen really had the latitude to, to do, I know you guys wanna do the right thing, and I never thought you had the latitude to do the right thing.
No, we're trying to be responsive and listen to your concerns.
Yeah, and I understand, so I'm like, wow. So I'm like, wow, they really don't have, you can't enforce, you know what I mean? So I get your position. This is not the fire chief's situation, you know what I mean? Like, the fire chief has his own situation, you know, this is not within his purview, this is not within the chief police purview, this is in the purview of the ZBA, who controls land use on private property. This is an issue and it's a, like I said before, it's a terrible precedent to set. And I just wanted to come in really quickly tonight, I didn't make a big deal of it, I didn't ask anybody to come in, I had phone calls from constituents, and I just kind of said, I'm going to go in tonight and just briefly speak about this, but really, if you can be there on August thirtieth at seven forty-five, be held in the board of selectmen's meeting room, which we are tonight. And that's where really, you need to, you know, vent your concerns. The people that showed up tonight, I don't think come last time, so I think a lot of them are here tonight just to kind of give you their perspective on the situation.
So just so you guys know, the ZBA, because this is going to get kicked to ZBA, they need to have a hearing and obviously the room they normally meet in is not going to be big enough, because as we saw the first time we had it. So I did reach out to Mr. Cushing as the chair of ZBA and we had a little conversation and I said, okay, I mean, we'll try to make our agenda that evening, either we'll start a little bit early or we'll just wrap it up by seven forty-five. And my thought process was, we may actually want to co-post, have this as a joint meeting. If you guys want, you don't need to, you could certainly bow out and let ZBA, you know, have the conversation, but if you've got, you know, if you've got a voice or you even just want to hear how it plays out, then we can join. We'll post it just in case, in case everybody wants to come and if they don't, then, you know, no harm, no foul. I mean, you know, it's very seldom we get a jam-packed.
You have to ask a question, though.
Sure.
Somewhere along the line, I heard that this is not unprecedented, that someone did this already at some end of Lakeside. Lakeside used to connect up to Pine Grove.
Oh, yeah. So that was an entirely different circumstance and it is not unprecedented, I guess, from an egress perspective, right? So this is entirely different in terms of egress. What that person did was, that was a cut through, right? People wanted to take a shortcut, they didn't want to go up, you know what I mean? They cut through their property, right? I don't think.
I don't know, I have no idea, I just heard.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I, you know, I grew up there, so yeah, years ago, that was done and the residents of that area did not make us think about it. And they didn't make us think about it because at the end of the day, it didn't affect their quality of life. This in particular affects their quality of life. It affects the quality of life of everybody on Roller Coaster Road and everybody on Lakeside. And the guy that I feel the baddest for, which I think, I'm sorry, but the one before him, everybody's turning around in the driveway now, it's like, it's insane. It's like, dude, I'm turning around in the driveway, I'm like.
When he was here, I said, I'm sorry, I had to turn around in the driveway.
His quality of life, if I lived in his house, I'd put a gate up my driveway and nobody would do that. And I don't know what you would do. You know, anything over two-hundred-and-fifty feet, I'm not even sure, I think it's more than that, but call it, whatever it is, they need a radius for a fire apparatus. It's very simple. What you created is, if you can't go on private property to turn around, where do you turn around? You create an issue for DPW, you've created an issue for, you know, so, you know, respectfully, the fire chief and the police chief, I'm not sick, they were put in an awkward situation as well as the select board was. And so what I did was, from my personal experience, was took it out of your hands and put it in the proper land use board's hand that I thought could properly have, you know, a dialogue about this. And I would love for, you know, a representative from the planning board to come, I would love for the select board to be there, because I think it's a really important dialogue to have. And I think that in the future, this should never happen again, because I can tell you from the resident, the residents that I reside in, we own on both sides of the road, and if I wanted to put a toll booth up and start charging a dollar per trip, I could do it because I own the entire road. And it's a terrible precedent to set.
Are you going, I assume you're going to extend an invitation and might I suggest, Ms. Green, that we make sure that we've got town council there for that night? Because I just think then you can dispose of whatever issues. Now, when I spoke to Mr. Cushing about having the hearing on the thirtieth and using our room, I did express to him some concern whether they would have a quorum, because clearly he and Mr. Buckley would have to recuse themselves because they live on the street. And, you know, I mean, even if they disclosed where they lived and went through all of that, I think it would be, the average person would say, how could you be impartial about this if they're part of that? But he said that was their plan and he felt that they still had a quorum with the other three members. So just so you know, I did have that conversation.
So let me refer, Mr. Buckley does not live on Lakeside Road.
His parents, I'm sorry.
Mr. Buckley lives on Main Street in Hanson. Not mentioning names and addresses, but, and I do reside there and his parents do reside there, but, you know, he's not ever there. But anyways, that being said, yes, if Mr. Buckley recuses and I recuse, there are three members of the board that are available.
And I would just urge you to do the right thing, which I know you will, because you don't want to have people appealing decisions because they don't think that you did the right thing with recusals.
Well, yeah.
You know, again, I'm trying not to name names, which is tricky, but yeah.
Yeah, I understand. You know, I think it's really self-evident, I just think that you guys have been looking for the latitude to make a decision where you really don't have the discretion. And I think really, and I would love, you know, if a representative for the planning board could be there.
I'd like the town planner, if he can make it, I don't want to be presumptuous, but if he can make it, we could get lead council and then somebody from planning. Just so you've got a cross-section of people who might have something to contribute to the conversation.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah. Mr. Weeks?
Yeah, I would just say, I appreciate everything that you're presenting, honestly, because I think it's the right attitude to have, because one of the things that was presented to us was a, well, it was an unstoppable force, immovable object type of thing. And what I mean by that was, is that if, as a board, we put limitations on someone's private property, it sets up a bad precedent moving forward about what we can do with people's private property, but if we didn't allow it to happen, then what does that mean for the other side? So I think it's a great kickback, I appreciate you doing that, because it should have fallen under a land use committee of some kind. So I think, A, good decision, B, I appreciate you bringing it forward like this. And I think you've got an uphill battle. I think you kind of know where you're coming from, but at the same time, it's just one of those wacky things that, are you going to tell people what they can do or are you going to tell people what they can't do? And it's really difficult. So I think the ZBA is probably the best place to kind of fall back on the bylaws and say, this is where, this is what we need to do.
Anybody else have anything quickly, because Mr. Cushing's turning into a pumpkin in a minute here. Well, I'll ask you folks to come up, but just keep in mind, this isn't a hearing, the hearing's going to happen at ZBA. I don't mind you coming up, but just know, we can't do anything.
I have a question.
Yeah. So, did you want to stay or?
So, yeah, no, I was going to leave, I could exit, but I just wanted to, you know, finally say that I appreciate it. Again, I know it wasn't, I know it was put in your lap, I realize as a select board that you guys were limited to what you guys can do, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate you guys hearing this tonight and following up. I know you said a month later and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, yeah, if you don't mind, that's, because nobody can hear you if you don't do that.
It's part of the course.
We've got about maybe five to ten minutes.
I just have a question. I'm Heel Joyce, I'm at two-seventy-six Lakeside Road. I was unable to make it the other hearing, I had a graduation in there, but I did have questions in there. One, the questions that I will present, it was, from what I understand, it was the building inspector that gave the permission to put the fence there. And as far as, it's not a fence, it's a blockade.
The building inspector is here.
I gave no.
Well, who gave the permission, how did this happen?
He received no permission from this office.
Well, who gave, well, how did he do this then?
He just did it.
He just did it.
There's no permission from anybody.
So, I mean, I mean, because he says that it's his property, but we all own property down there and we've never done anything like this. And I've lived there for over forty-eight years.
Yeah, just to be clear, we are not supporting what was done there.
No, I understand that, but, I mean, I can go down and just block my part of the road off because, you know, this is what I can't understand. So anyone, I mean, it's a free United States, I guess, and anybody can do what they want to do, you know, but as far as, you know, I see, you know, we followed, we were never notified of this, so if this was presented to the town.
It was not ever presented to the town.
Then how did this happen? He made a proposal.
He just did it.
But he came to a meeting, yeah.
He pummeled up a blockade at two-seventy-six.
Yeah.
You can do it. There's nothing we can do.
He did not, he did not come. He put us on notice. What he did was say, effective such and such a date, I'm putting up a fence. That's what he did. He never came to a meeting.
Okay.
He never, he never pulled a permit, he never did anything.
Right.
I just want to give you, I just want, no, it's fine, I just want to give you a quick thirty-second overview of what happened. So what happened was is that this individual had sent us a letter saying, we're doing this. Not an ask, nothing, just we're doing this. And then in the semi-discussion that you just witnessed was the follow-up of a conversation where we were having, because we were put on notice and we said, well, what do we do? It's private property. So is this setting a precedent that anybody, to Mr. Cushing's point, can just put, because we use this as an analogy when we were talking about this, can anybody just throw up a toll booth then and just say, I'm going to start charging you? Can every single driveway now have their own blockade?
Yeah.
And the answer is, yeah, maybe, because there's nothing we can do. So what you heard tonight was the follow-up to that conversation around, well, what can we do? Well, what we can do is kick it to the appropriate land use board, which is in this case, the ZBA, to make a determination about what is the precedent that we're going to set.
Okay.
So that's what you heard.
I appreciate that. But as far as town council, I guess, was there, but your, our town council, which we, you have the authority to deal with town council, we help to pay as taxpayers, we help pay for that road that we're on. So I mean, how does this all set?
Well, town council, ma'am, gives advice to the board about what is legally the best course for the town. So the advice from town council is, this is a private way, it is a private matter, the citizens there probably need to take civil action and probably you can't do anything about it. So that was the legal, she is not town council for the entire town, she's town council for the folks at town hall and the boards.
Right, right.
So.
But as far as, we have, that road has been open for over sixty years. So this is the problem, where does the town come into their precedence as far as, it's been there, this has been a right of way, a right to pass by. Okay, this has been in all of our deeds. So I mean, for someone to do this, I understand that we have to go to land court, hire attorney or whatever else, but I mean, I, I, I still can't make clear in my head, the town is authorized to come down because it's in our deeds that you're supposed to grade those roads twice a year to allow transportation to come through, emergency vehicles and all of that. And then, you know, I mean, and then to have them come at that last hearing and things like that and say, there's no safety issues and that there are truly safety issues.
Well, just to be clear, that wasn't a hearing, it wasn't a hearing.
Yeah.
Because we are not authorized to have hearings on land use.
Right.
That's where Mr. Cushing's, ZBA is going to come into play.
Right, yeah.
And so I totally understand everything that you're saying and in a way, you know, we obviously feel very similar to the way that you feel, but as Mr. Cushing mentioned and as our building inspector has clarified with town council and as we have clarified with town council, we have no ability to do anything. So I think, quite honestly, your best bet is to make sure you go to that ZBA hearing on the thirtieth at seven forty-five.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And that is in fact a hearing.
Yeah.
Where everybody will come up, they will be voicing their concerns, and then the ZBA will render a decision about how to move forward, whether they're going to do anything about this and whether they're not going to do anything about that. But this board can't do anything, we're, our hands are tied at this point, ma'am.
I understand, okay.
I'm glad you said that, because I think that what you're actually watching is us trying to figure out what precedent is being set. So you're actually watching it as we're kind of navigating the different systems and the different things that are happening.
Right.
You're watching in real time. Unfortunately, it's happening on your street, so you feel it a lot more, but you're watching municipal government try to figure out what to do right now. We don't have the jurisdiction to make a decision, which is why it might have appeared that we gave permission, but the reality is, we don't have the jurisdiction to say yes or no.
Right.
So the current jurisdiction falls, and you've heard it from us, we all learned this at the same time right now.
Right.
That the jurisdiction has shifted to ZBA. They'll make a decision based off of that.
All right. So, but they being part of the town, they have the authority to make that decision?
Yes, they do.
They do.
And we will make sure that they have the support, their legal counsel, hopefully the town planner and anybody else who might have a, you know, a horse in that race.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mrs. Buckley.
I live in the middle of, I live at two-thirty-six, the middle of the road. I own the whole road, but I'm very respectful of that, that I, our neighbors need to get through the road. If I did what they did on the corner, no one could drive down the road.
Right.
So, I mean, every neighbor that said to me, why don't you just put up a toll booth sign, just for a joke, I don't do it. But if I did what they did, no one could get through, I'm in the middle of the road and our neighbors would have no place to go, but get out of our road. And I understand that and I get.
Oh, you'd block them completely.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't do that. It's a right of way, they need to let them get out of the road.
I agree.
No, I am really hoping that maybe good neighborly feelings might prevail at some point and things will change, because I think, you know, it's a very small neighborhood and everybody's very close.
It's a nice neighborhood, we have wonderful neighbors and I know that someone on the corner said he doesn't want anybody driving in front of his house. So what's happened to me is, anyone that used to go in front of his house, and I don't mind, they're my neighbors, they have to go down in front of my house, I'm only twelve feet from the road.
Yeah.
But I don't mind because they have to get out and they're my neighbors and friends, that's the way it should be.
It's a very strange end result. I, I'm sorry that you're all going through it. That's why we wanted to try to talk about it, because we really felt the pain and we felt like, geez, there must be something we could do, but it turns out.
I'm just trying. Are you the only one that's driven down there? And I know you said you did.
I've driven down.
All of us have.
So you guys know how meticulous it is.
I've actually made comments about one of the residents, I coached him, his child, and he lives there with his wife and daughter now. I've been down that road many, many times, driving my son to visit Zach, no last names. So I know the road.
So you know how rough that is.
Yeah, you're in a tough spot.
Yeah.
I really do feel bad for the guy at the end of the road.
Oh, me too.
I mean, I already apologized to him for turning around, but there's no other way to do it. I mean, there's nothing else you can do.
You see, the dump truck's going down, they have to, they actually have to, the huge, I mean, it's as big as this room, they have to turn around in there and then back all the way down. I mean, it's ridiculous. It's a safety issue, because I took a picture of, you know, him trying to turn around. It took him fifteen minutes just to turn to go back down to get all the people to the end. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Did either of you ladies want to say anything else or?
I'm all set.
Okay. You guys all set? All right, thank you for coming and we hope, we'll see you on the thirtieth and hopefully we'll get some closure on this. All right, thank you. All right, um, isn't it interesting, the variety of issues we might talk about on any given evening?
Now, Jeff, if you don't mind, did we change, was it the meeting on eight twenty-three? We changed it to eight thirty?
Um, I don't know, um.
Eight thirty, uh, eight thirty?
So eight thirty is, um, eight twenty-three is when, are when the warrants, uh, articles are due for the warrant. Eight thirty is the night that the selectmen were going to review the, the articles for the warrant.
So it's not a meeting on the twenty-third?
It's just a due date.
Right, there's not a meeting on the twenty-third.
And I just want to make sure we have.
Do you have the package?
The, the right numbers, so the, um.
Eight twenty-three, due date only.
Only, okay, because on eight nine, we were gonna push back the, uh, deregionalization feasibility committee.
I wanted to bring that up tonight and honestly, I would like to talk about that on the ninth.
On the ninth, okay.
Yeah, if you can, okay.
I just wanted to make sure we're on.
All right, yeah, that'd be great. Okay. So, um, with that, we, and I thank you so much for your continued patience, although you didn't have much of a choice, but I, I do appreciate it. Um, so with us tonight, we have got Chris Howard, who is the chair of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, and Jeff Simonek, who is the superintendent of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. Um, and I want to introduce you, you know most of us, but you may not have met our two new members, um, Mr. Ed Heel and Mrs. Ann Rain. Um, so, um, we, if you guys want to come up, and I know we had you on the agenda to talk about the regional, um, agreement. And then perhaps if we can talk about, I think I had mentioned to you either in text or verbally, um, just how do we do better about communicating prior to town meeting in May about budgets and all that stuff?
Sure, so, uh, thank you for having us. So yes, regional agreement, so the regional agreement, as you all know, is, uh, thirty plus years old. We looked at it, uh, both towns looked at it several years ago. Um, at Hanson, we actually had voted it and then rescinded it. Uh, and really, uh, there's a lot of, um, feedback from the school committee that it is a thirty year old agreement. There are areas that we worry about, maybe are on the fringes of compliance or not compliance, and it's one of those, uh, items that really needs an update. So what we, uh, wanted to do, um, the last time we created a regional agreement, um, committee, the school committee just created it and we created a fairly large committee and we just did that. So kind of in the spirit of what you're talking about before we create a committee, um, because the subcommittee is, is created by the school committee. We wanted to talk to both the selectmen of Whitman and the select board in Hanson and kind of get some feedback in terms of thoughts. So really, there's two questions. Um, question one is, what is the appetite to look at negotiating a revised regional agreement? That's, that's question one, um, because it does require all three, really requires the school committee, the town of Whitman and the town of Hanson, all three. Um, I think I said it Whitman, it was like a three-legged tango or something. I don't know what the analogy was. It was poor, but you get the gist. Um, it requires all three of us, it requires all three of us to come to the table together. Um, and then question two, if, if the answer to question one is yes, we do have that appetite, then question two would be, do you have thoughts on what the composition of that committee have, should look like? I think some of the general feedback we've kind of talked about and heard is maybe smaller. Um, because at the end of the day, whatever is drafted is, A, it's done in public. Um, and then B, it has to actually go back to the full school committee. It has to go back to the selectmen and back to the select board and it has to go to each town meeting. So it's not, it's not a situation where, you know, you can just create this agreement in a backroom deal and it's done. It has to go through a very formal vetting process, so that was the gist.
And we haven't talked as a board about this. But, um, one of the very strong pieces of feedback that we've consistently gotten is about representation. Um, given the fact that we've got the statutory method, um, that's being used, um, which, um, there are still wounds, um, over that. And, um, and so the feedback that we, we get is, well, we've still got the same number of seats, but we're paying more money. Um, and I know, um, there, there are statutory requirements, not to use the word statutory, which can be triggering for people. But, um, um, there are regulatory requirements in terms of the composition, um, and how that flows. Um, and I know there's a, because we've talked to our town council about this before, when, when the whole statutory thing, uh, first came down. Um, and I think one of the things that my understanding, and we'll have to get engaged with town council if we decide we're gonna pursue this with you guys, um, is that even if we were able to get another seat, it would be a weighted seat. So in essence, our votes would still tally up to the same number of people, if you will, well. But it, so for instance, if it was five-five, the Whitman guys would be more heavily weighted. Their vote would be more heavily weighted and ours would be reduced. Even though we've got five people, it wouldn't be a hundred percent vote for each person. Um, so, but I think, you know, if we were to pursue that, that's one of the things that I, I, I know people want to have a conversation about. Um, where are you guys at? Do you want to open up this conversation? And enter into a negotiation about the regional, um, school agreement? And, and, and I must say, one of the things that we haven't had an opportunity as a board to do is to talk to, um, Mr. Heel and Mrs. Rain, to tell them how we got to where we are. Because there are a lot of misconceptions that we mailed it in, we gave it to the town of Whitman, Hanson didn't fight, we should have fought, you know, blah, blah, blah. Uh, people do not realize, we sought legal counsel, we reached out to Desi, to our state senator, to our state representative. Um, we talked to our town council about whether a lawsuit would, you know, be precedented, whether it might even get us anything. Um, and, and in the end, ta-talked to other towns who had been through something similar. And in the end, it was clear that it was a fey accompli and that, uh, the state was, this is the way the state was gonna.
So I need to say that I would love to know how we got there because I have a big problem with that. I have a serious problem with the way that thing was negotiated. I'm sorry, I do. I don't understand how a town can have more students and pay less money. I, that makes my logic.
I understood and trust, I understand and trust me, I fought this bitterly, uh, for, Chris knows and Jeff, Jeff knows too. You know, I mean, I went to school committee meetings and I'm like, no, there's no way this can be the right result. This isn't legal, da-da-da.
So this is just mandated by the state?
Yeah, so, so we're not gonna be able to necessarily cover this tonight. But I do think that it's important and I do think that we should have, um, because I want everybody to be sort of brought up to speed and have like, as much as we can, have the same level of knowledge about, about historically how we got here. Cause I think it's very important when we're talking about moving forward, that we've, we've all got this baseline established. So I think what we can do, we can easily do it in an open session or we can have you guys talk to Kate individually and she can fill you in. It's really up to, I, it might be better to do it in an open session, just so everybody's hearing what we went through to get to where we are.
I think so.
Um, and we're just doing it above board. Um, and I think that it's important for us to do that because I don't see how we move forward with the conversation unless everybody has an understanding of how we got to where we are.
I agree with that. Can I just add one really quick thing?
Yes, Mr. Weeks.
Um, so just, just for Ann and Ed, your knowledge too, just for the sake of putting this out there. I know you fought really hard, but I also want to give credit that the whole board prior to that fought really hard. And our school committee representatives fought really, really hard too. So it's a lot, there's a lot of unsung humble people that weren't like, you know, banging the bells, saying that I'm, I'm doing this really, really hard work. There were a lot of people trying to get those, that representation that were on that committee that have since either moved on or are still there. Um, they were working hard to try to get us what we wanted.
Um, and I, yeah, and, and so I think, um, so if we can get you guys up to speed on where we, how we got to where we are at, you may or may not still agree after that, but we are where we are.
Right.
I have a feeling now, based on what I've heard, you asked a question, but I don't have the, I don't have the background. So I, I'm gonna just answer based on what I know now is the representation needs to be equal or it's just silly. It's like, we, we can't not, how can you have a board, uh, with two towns with one town? No matter how many people there are, I mean, you're two towns, you've gotta be equal. You've gotta, representation.
Well, there, there, so there are regulations tied to student population. So even though our share has increased, we're still not paying more than Whitman, but we are paying more per pupil than Whitman. Um, so there are regulations, um, that talk about the composition.
Do we have the representatives actually give us that breakdown? So, so I, I know you got something, but I'll answer that question. I know you want to share something. Um, so there is a mass general law, we can share it with all of you, that clearly articulates, not my personal opinion, but articulates the state's law on the composition of school committee representation. There are five ways you can do it.
Yeah.
Right, and so it says, here's step one, here's step two, here's step three, here's step four, here's step five. I think you, I, I haven't looked at it in a little bit, um, but I know there's a step that does talk about you can make it five-five, but then it's weighted votes. There's the way that we do it presently, there's an other way where you can have representatives, um, run in either town in a joint election.
Oh, yeah, that.
So that's a, that's a totally different.
That was not flow.
Um, but there's five ways, so, you know, certainly if you're gonna have a meeting and you're gonna go through, hey, what happened? And invite legal counsel, I know Kate has it and if not, we can start off, I, I know I have it somewhere. So I can send it along after this meeting to Laura and she can share it, but it spells out. So to Ms. Rain's point, it's, you know, I'm not really sure how it got created, but it's really, I think Kate will have it. It's like one person, one vote, and there's very clear legal guidance on how that came to be and what it is, so.
So how do you, if, if we were to say, yes, we agree, this agreement is from like nineteen ninety-one or something, right? Um, and, um, and, and it, it's, it just isn't an accurate representation of, of a lot of things. There's a lot that's still dated, you know, that isn't even, uh, compliant, you know, that type of thing. I think that amendment might have addressed a few of those things, but, um, not everything. Um, what is the proposal? I personally, if we're gonna move forward with this, keep it small. I think you get unwieldy, you get controversial, you're not gonna get anything done if we try to have everybody and their brother be part of it. Um, I don't know what Whitman said when you spoke to them, like in my opinion, like maybe one select board member or town administrator and maybe a FinCom person or something? I don't really even know. Um, what, what did Whitman say? Not that.
Very similar.
Okay.
I mean, there, there was no, I mean, it was a discussion, there were some different views, there was, hey, maybe just a selectman. Hey, maybe we include FinCom, maybe we don't. There was active conversation. Um, but I think the general consensus was trying not to get, let it get unwieldy, but you know how it goes. Like you start throwing out names and then.
Well, you remember, it was like twelve people or something. It was crazy. And we couldn't get any traction or anything done. It was, it was.
And even the, uh, when we tried to fix this in seventeen, um, I think it was August or September of two thousand seventeen. We first met.
Yep.
One Monday a month.
Yes.
And it seemed to me there were, um, uh, twenty to twenty-four people.
There were, there were quite a few people around the table.
Yeah, citizens large, honestly. Uh, town administrator, two selectmen, we do not need a finance, uh, committee member because they are only interested in finance. That's it. That's not what this is about. It's not about money. It's about coming up with an agreement. I also don't think we meet one Monday a month. And whatever Monday that was, whether it was the first Monday of the month or the third, I missed the meeting because I forgot. It's every Monday until we come up with an agreement to bring back to the boards. It, to me, it's that simple. Six to seven people total.
Yeah.
Or six to eight, so that there's an even number from each town. And Chris, you would know this better than I, Jeff. Even if it was five-five with weighted votes, uh, uh, a school committee vote is never gonna end in a time. If the school committee is doing the right things for the students.
That's right.
In the school, it's gonna be nine to one or eight to two, one way or another. It would never end in a time. If the school committee is doing what they are elected to do. Now, everybody knows I've said some things to ruffle feathers. Um, I wanna get this done, but it has to be fair. Um, I think, you know, I'm gonna meet with the board after the deregionalization feasibility committee meets. And we're gonna give our recommendation to the board.
And, and just to level set, because we, I know people feel like we've been playing cat and, like, we've been sort of dragging this out. But really what happened, just for you guys, i- it is not our intention to drag this out. The folks we hired to do the study did not deliver on the goods. They did not give us the bottom line, what's it gonna cost, which is of course what we needed to know. Anything else is just superficial, like completely not useful. Um, and so we had to go back and say, this is what, what, this isn't what we paid you to give us. You're gonna have to give us the product that you said you were gonna give us. So Jim is going to meet with his committee, what, tomorrow? Yeah, and then meet with us, um, August ninth and tell us what their recommendations are. Um, so it, but I think regardless of what your recommendations are, we still need to get this agreement in shape. Because even if, let's say, and you know where I stand on this, I, I don't think financially it's ever gonna be feasible. But even if you wave a magic wand and say, it's so financially feasible, it's unbelievable, let's do it. Um, we're still gonna have to have this agreement and it will take years to, you know, decouple and figure out the arrangement and all that stuff. Meantime, we just will be better served by having an accurate agreement.
My question would be, and Chris, you said it, that Hanson, um, voted and then we had to rescind the vote. And then Desi, you know, whatever happened, happened with the memo. Okay, and we know about the memo. But then that was it. There was no talks, no discussion. There was never anything saying, let's get back to the table and get this right.
And we've got some fence mending to do. When I say we, I mean, not really us necessarily, but I think as a group, this has tremendously impacted the relationships between all three parties. I would really like to see, you know, us try to use this agreement to get our voice heard in this process more than people feel like it has been, um, and to try to get us back on track as partners. Um, and that partnership really means listening to each other and, um, trying to connect with each other as early in the process as possible, whatever's going on. As soon as we know something, as soon as you guys know something, giving a heads up and not waiting for those formal processes. And some, you know, maybe COVID, it may, it may have been the, you know, the statutory, it might have been a combination of all of the things. I don't know what contributed, but something has severely jumped the tracks and we've got to get back to a place where we are having ongoing conversations. Um, so with that, Mr. Weeks, yes?
Um, I think that we go with a smaller group. My personal opinion is, um, it, it, I always say that it's never, it's never a bad thing to have a conversation about it. So I think that looking at the regional agreement is perfectly reasonable to do that. I would say two, two representatives from each board, plus the town manager and, it's town manager at Whitman, right? There's a town administrator.
Town administrator.
Oh, yeah, so plus the town administrator. So two selectmen per board, plus the representative of town administrators, plus two school committee members would be my recommendation. Um, and then we just start the conversation there and try to get it as close to whatever we've been wanting for this entire time.
I, I'm fine with that because if we need anybody else, say FinCom or the accountant, they can just, they can just, you know, not be voting members.
Yeah, no, I just like to keep things simple. So it's just, if you need them, you just call them in. I mean, it's your committee, you can do what you want with it. I think that, um, I, I, I think what happened last time was a combination of two things. I think it was first, too many people in a room. And second, they, I don't care what anybody says, there was no guidance or any organization to that meeting whatsoever.
It wasn't as structured as it could have been.
I think that, uh, I don't think at all, I'll go as far as saying as all, at all, because we didn't have an entire, in my, again, in my opinion, an entire, uh, leg of the stool. I, I say it's the three-legged stool. So you had both boards and then you had the school committee's entire committee there. And it was, it seemed like there were too many surprises and too many unanswered questions and open-ended things uh, to even start a conversation, let alone have a meaningful one occur. So I think we keep it simple, keep it short and, uh, just start that process. I think, I, I trust the, the representatives you would put up.
Well, I would very much like to hear from Mrs. Rain and then Mr. Heel on whether you want to have the conversa, start the conversation about the regional agreement.
Well, I think we have to start the conversation about it, but I, I'm not.
We could just say, we're gonna just live with the nineteen ninety-one agreement forever.
Oh, I see, you mean, you mean that, I was, well, I mean, right off the bat, I was looking at this like.
I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying.
Old school, mentioned and, I mean, there's all sorts of junk. It has to be reviewed.
That was before computers.
Okay, and Mr. Heel, do you feel that we need to have that conversation?
I do, I do think we need to.
Okay, and then what we include in the conversation, we'll all talk about it, yeah. Mr. Howard?
So, so if I may, right, so the piece that I think, so you're gonna meet, so, right, I'm a, I'm a Hanson resident. I'm on the school committee, which is comprised of both, and so I kind of have to balance all this in my head and try and make sure I'm always doing the right thing for all of that, which is sometimes interesting. Um, so you're meeting, uh, so one of the things that came up in Whitman was there was some angst about the deregionalization piece, right? So you're meeting when on the deregionalization study?
Mr. Hickey's meeting tomorrow with his committee, because they have not talked to decide what they're going to do. They just got the final results.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and, um, and then we're meeting on the ninth and Mr. Hickey's committee is gonna make a recommendation to us and we'll make a decision hopefully that night. Um, I, I mean, I, I can't absolutely say we will, because we might have follow-up questions or something. But I, but I, I tend to think we'll kind of know that night, whether it, that's something we want to pursue or not.
So to me, I think that's really important, right? Because again, I'd, I'd, I'm just, I'd rather be honest and efficient than kind of all over the place. So if, as part of that, you know, the, the regional agreement renegotiation, are we talking about, hey, we need to do this because we're not sure Hanson wants to stay, or hey, we need to do this because we think we want to stay? And that might provide kind of two different paths. The school committee, we're not meeting formally until the end of August. Twenty-four. Because right now, we're working on all of our kind of summer planning stuff. So I kind of like where this is going. It should create an opportunity for you to, again, have some dialogue, give some clear guidance. We'll just watch the meeting, we can see what you say, what you're thinking. And that will allow us to then create a subcommittee that will hopefully have some clear guidance because.
You don't have to watch, I mean, certainly, I mean, my condolences if that's.
No, no, no. We might come too. I might be here as well.
But we can just update you and let you know.
Fantastic. I think it's important for the public, right, because I'm, I'm envisioning other people, you know, listening to this meeting and trying to understand the process. And certainly for Ed and for Ann, they, they gotta, they gotta get up to speed with some of maybe what happened and read that other MGL that talks about that other little method thing, um, that we all spent a lot of time reading in the past and, and understand that piece.
and, and understand that piece. And then certainly you do the deregization. That would then give us time, and you've given us some feedback, smaller, better, um, you know, and again, it'll be kind of the will of the school committee on how to compose that. I will take, I'll say it right now, you know, based upon what I've heard from both boards, I'd rather start small because you can add. I have never been part of a board where it starts and you subtract.
No.
I've never been part of one of those.
No, and I think Mr. Weeks had a good point. I think, you know, as we, if we need other experts, we just call them in. They don't have to be voting members. You know, they can just be people that we pull in to help us inform the conversation. Um, so, okay, so I think you guys are, are good with that, so we're good about moving forward with that. Um, and, um, do we want to take a formal vote on this?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add, Madam Chair, it's okay, is that I wanted to make sure that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, which we seem to all admit from our discussions, are part of this committee. Um, and I'm sure you, well, I don't know, Chris, I would hope you agree with that, um, you know, being the chair of the school committee, that, Jeff, you weren't slighted.
Yep.
With, you know...
You, you want to keep me out of the committee? I'm good with that. No, I understand, I understand.
Nonchalant.
No, we would, we would, that was almost, we're a non-voting member of that committee?
Right, right.
You know what I mean? But we could deliver the pieces that you would need as the experts in that area.
Yeah, and I think, you know, um, if, you know, when we get to the point where we're meeting, um, I would hope that, um, to Mr. Weeks's point, um, and I think to Mr. Hickey's point, um, more structure is better.
Yes.
Um, and so I think if we can try to focus the conversation on, here are the things that we know we're out of compliance with, here are the changes we've made, are there any other things that both of the towns are concerned about, that type of thing. Um, and then I, I think, um, you know, we're clearly, I think you've heard from all of us that the representation is something we have heard from our voters. Um, and so we will try, try to, in the interim, perhaps, um, get our town council to come and talk to us about what the options are, but just know that that's something we're going to want to have a conversation about. Yeah.
And what, I think one of the positives is, we had a standing regional agreement in 18, and we can look at that bench, or at that, that structure and say, these were already changed.
That's a good point.
So now we can move forward, and here are the issues that we have to address instead of saying, hey, Wild Park Street's still in there, or McQuan's still in there. Well, those are already out.
Yeah.
So some of that legwork is done, and now I can focus in on, on the, on the, um, representation piece. Uh, but we found this year, there were some pieces around transportation that it's too mucky and too gray, that we really need to address. No matter what, we're going to live together for at least five years. If, if the, if the committee decides, you know, that worst-case scenario, that we need to address so that it's not unclear for us. And I just want to say, any member of the board, two new folks, want to come up and, and talk, and I can show you some of the, the legalities of what we went through and walk through some of the Desi stuff that is easy but hard to find out there. I can get you through that so that you have an understanding, um, of where, what was presented, so it's not, you know, dragging on for two or three hours on a Tuesday night. We can just have a conversation. So, you know, please do call up...
I would love, I would love that, and thank you for making that offer.
That, I think that would be great, so that, one, we can talk, you know, and I can show you what's going on in the district because you represent everyone here, and, uh, and then we can, I can show you some of the things that we went through, because understand, that was my first year in the job too, so I learned on, as we went, with a lot of stuff that was gray and wasn't discussed in those, in that 17, 18 conversations.
No.
You know what I mean? Uh, and I want to make sure we touch base and make sure every I is dotted and T is crossed.
All right, that sounds great. And then, um, prospectively, I know we've talked about this, um, so I'm hoping the next budget cycle, um, what we would really like to see as a board, and I think we've discussed it with both of you guys, is kind of the, I hate to say the Ruth model, but, um, Ruth used to come, and she would kind of present like, here's where the school committee came in, here's what I asked for, here's where the school committee came in, here's what we're going to probably present to you guys as our budget, knowing that, you know, there's a lot of pen, quote-unquote, pencil sharpening in between that and the final amount. That's kind of what we need, um, in order for all of us to be able to understand where that budget fits in with the rest of our budget. Um, and, um, we're going to, not just with you guys, but just generally, um, we're going to be a lot more, um, disciplined about the way we're handling the budget, about our discussions, about who we're having those discussions with, and the timing in which we're having those. No more fly-by-the-seat-of-our-pants, getting a capital improvement matrix the night of the town meeting, any of that stuff. It's not going to fly. We're not doing it. Um, so you guys are part of that, and so I just would urge you to think about that and your timing. Um, because again, this is getting that collaboration, getting that partnership back, and I, and, um, I'm hoping that the agreement, um, actually starts that conversation and, um, you know, and, and I think anything we can do to bring everybody up to speed, um, and then, you know, we'll move forward.
Can we just respond to that briefly?
Yeah.
Because I know you've got a lot of stuff, and you're on item number three. Um, so yeah, I think, you know, we had talked a little bit about the budget process, so one of the things we're going to try and do is create a budget document with some timelines and bring it back to you. So whatever that happens, if you're okay, it should take five minutes of your time.
Yep.
Um, quick question, I think with one of the things that we were talking about, would you be open to having a joint meeting with, uh, not only the budget being shared with the board of, or the select board, but also the finance committee at the same time?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Because one is, right, so we, we were just...
No, I don't want to make you guys have to go to the same group.
Otherwise, it's four, right?
And put...
It's a public hearing, and then... Four, so...
I think you need to do more of those types of meetings.
I, I agree, because, that's what I was just going to say, Joe, because I agree, because I think the benefit is, we get to hear what their thoughts are, right? Because we, we rely on the finance committee. They're there for a reason. And so, you know, but a lot of times, everybody's so in their little swim lane that we're not really talking to one another, um, even within town hall. So it's not just you guys. It's like, just sort of universally. Everybody's well-intentioned, but it's like, they're just getting in their little swim lane, and they're thinking about what their end goal is, and they don't think to say, oh, should I be talking to so-and-so about it? Should, did I share that information with the other department? So absolutely, I think that would be heading in the right direction.
So there's three pieces, and Jeff and I were talking about this, we'll, we'll probably present it at budget subcommittee, talk through it, and then share it back with both towns, but does the pub, does the school committee review, right? Because like you know, you all well know, right, there is open meeting law. So it, you know, the, the school committee is kind of, has to hear it in public meeting. It's not like we're all having a meeting with Jeff to talk about the budget. No, it doesn't work that way. So, you know, he has to put together the budget, the school committee needs to see it, we have to have a public hearing by law, and then certainly we have to think about how we can partner with the town. So it's kind of those three pieces. We just probably have to think about the order of those three and how that works. Uh, but we could certainly do a, maybe a Hanson joint meeting and a Whitman joint meeting and that type of thing, so...
I, I would, I wouldn't even mind having a Whitman and Hanson joint meeting. I don't know if they're up for it, but, you know...
Good feedback, we can ask, right?
To have the FinComs and the two, the two select boards. Uh, for my money, I've always been mystified by why two towns that are in a district together do so very little communicating with one another. Um, it's always been a little weird to me. Um, and, um, I mean, I know we've individually developed relationships with different, um, select board members, um, over in Whitman, and, and I think we need to do more of that. Uh, that information sharing is critical. So, Mr. Weeks?
Just, just for the sake of, uh, putting this out there, so this is my first, like, inter, I don't know what else to call it, interdisciplinary type of committee that we're forming, and one of the reasons why, uh, to, uh, to, to Jim's point, why I didn't in, include you, Jeff, into that, into my conversation, was because I didn't want to make the assumption of who you were going to bring to represent the school committee, because it's outside of our jurisdiction. I feel like, do we just make, uh, a, 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 a motion to create this committee, or do we just draft some language that each, like, body, all, so with all the language of the committee is the same?
Well, no, so it's their committee, and then they, and, and so what I'm hearing Chris say is, they're talking to us in Whitman, so that when they decide to take the vote to form it, they're going to include our thought process, and so likely...
So you're coming to us, we're just going to give you two members or whatever we decide?
What, if the committee decides, our committee decides that, to make up with the subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're going to ask our school, what we're going to ask the school committee to do is, listen to this meeting.
Yep.
Listen to the Whitman meeting, hear what was said, and then now, with the feedback of both of those boards, create this subcommittee.
Perfect.
Opposed to, we don't have a conversation with either of you, we just create a 20-person committee, and next thing you know, you're sitting in a meeting saying, well, the school committee said we have to put, you know, these four people, and now we have to do it. So this is, yes, we're trying to be a little bit more thoughtful in the approach opposed to...
This dialogue, this is helpful.
We'll do the same thing with the budget, so that's my point.
It's great, and it saves me from a long-winded...
Now, do we need to take a motion? Do we need to?
No, I think you have to ask, like, that was my point of my question. I don't think we have to, but...
All right, so is there anybody who disagrees with two select board members? Obviously Lisa needs to be part of it, whether she's a voting member, probably not, but definitely part of it. Um, and does anybody have a problem with us moving forward with the agreement? Okay, all right, so I think we're, we're...
Thank you. And just one more thing, I see you appointed somebody to your capital committee, or Frank Melisi?
Melisi, yeah.
Melisi?
Yeah.
So he's my, he's going to be a good go-to for us to give our capital matrix to, I assume.
Or...
Yes, yes, well, he...
Who's our, who's our chair of capital?
Well, that was going to be part of my, um, updates.
Well, I don't want to speak.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, but I saw that just on my way in today.
No, I've been on that committee for, like, 15 years. Uh, Frank Melisi, though, just to steal, steal my thunder, um, he was voted chair last night.
Okay.
So he's, he's the go-to regardless.
We have a point of contact, so we are going to update our matrix in August. I don't think we're going to have anything for the special, but something will come to you early in October.
Great.
So now you have a full six months to
Yep.
understand capital.
Yeah, that, that's great.
We'll actually have a capital improvement committee to look at it.
That's awesome.
So that's amazing.
I'm sure you already saw it, but he sent out all the, um, the, um, letters to all the department heads asking for the updates on the matrix and stuff, so...
So I think that's good. I appreciate that, because that was a, a really a little foggy area for us.
He's been a fantastic chair for 24 hours.
All right, well, thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you so much for having us.
All right, have a good one.
Have a good night.
Night. All right, um, so, let's see, um, I have just all over the map here. Um, so let's start at number one. Shall we appoint Chris Hoffman to the conservation commission? So last we spoke, um, we weren't sure really, um, who Mr. Hoffman was, we were unclear about openings, et cetera, et cetera. Does anybody have anything to chime in? And I know you said you had met him, he had attended...
I had met him. I have no, I have no idea about openings and if they, if there is a, um, at large, I...
Yeah, you're talking about alternate, right?
Yep, alternate. Ms. Green?
We weren't even sure if it was a thing.
Um, any update on that?
So I, I did send out an email, um, but I, I don't know if you received it or not, because I had a little trouble reading, um, the email address, and as far as trying to give him a call, I was not able to give him a call, just...
All right, so why don't we just...
Limited on time, but, um...
Let's just put a pin in it.
We can, we can email that though. What are you saying? It'll say, "Flower"? Yeah, that, that's what I sent it to, um... That's what it looks like it says. Yes, that's what I sent it to.
You know what, uh, since he's been attending meetings, I wonder whether, um, Lon might have a better email address and conservation?
He's only attended one that I'm aware of.
Okay. Maybe Lon or Phil might have, you know, or, or Frank up in the office, conservation office. Um, but we also have a cell phone number.
Yeah.
So could we text him perhaps?
Yes, we can certainly text him.
Okay.
I didn't notice that.
All right, great. So we'll just put a pin in that. Um, uh, in new business, we've got vote to approve Calvary Baptist Church's Hanson Family Fund Day on August 20th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, okay? Yeah. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And, you know, thank you for them doing this. It's a free event, it's a fun little event. They have the jumpy's and everything, and it's well-attended. Um, and vote warrant for state primary. Um, well, do, do we have that? Is there something we're supposed to be reading?
No, um, it, it's just from the town clerk, and it's just a vote to open the warrant for the state primary. Um, she gave a whole, large form, uh, but there's nothing specific to read.
All right, so we just need a motion to, um, open the warrant for the state primary?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you open the warrant? Like, what, what does this mean? And I hate to...
For the state primary, so the state primaries got their own warrant, so we have to in town say, we're going to open the warrant for Hanson residents for the state primary.
Okay, okay.
Did you make the motion yet?
I did not get a motion on that, yeah.
Sorry about that.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I was second, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. Um, and vote to approve Hanson Day, September 24th at Hanson Green.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, fantastic. We're just clipping right along here, and, um...
Here we go.
Well, you know what, I'm going to go through some of the quicker little things, and then we'll, um, vote to ratify a complete integrated police union contract. Uh, Ms. Green, can you elaborate on what that is?
Yes, actually to, um, elaborate, but, um, I'm going to ask you if we could possibly table this. Um, so what had happened was, the, the fire contract, um, uh, I'm sorry, it's not supposed to be police, it's supposed to be the fire contract. Uh, the fire contract that the selectmen signed a few weeks back
Yep.
um, was an incomplete contract, and I was not aware of it until, um, after our executive assistant had left, the union came in and brought a new copy, um, of which didn't make it into any of our folders.
Okay.
So, um, and then when I looked at it tonight, I saw language that the union had questions, but it wasn't the full language. So I need to re, bring that back to the selectmen to re-sign.
All right, so we'll just...
So if we could table that?
That's great.
Look at that table.
All right, and then, um, I guess we might as well discuss, uh, discussion of part-time position in select board office.
As chairman chair and members of the board, um, so I've been working very diligently to develop a job description, uh, for the part-time position in, the temporary part-time position in the select board's office. Um, but a suggestion was made by actually our town accountant to, since we were in the process of hiring an administrative assistant to the planning board in the town planner, which is a part-time position. Um, our town accountant came up with a suggestion, in order to fill the needs of both offices, and in order to make the positions more enticing to candidates, why don't we create a combined position in the two different offices that would make one full-time position, so that the candidate would be eligible for benefits, um, and entice them to stay here. Um, one problem, one issue that was voiced by the town planner is, as a 19-hour-a-week position, his office would always be a revolving door for the first full-time position that came up, um, or they may leave for another full-time position with benefits. So our town accountant suggested this. Um, I've been working with town council on it, uh, to develop a job description, uh, develop a title to the position, um, which you have in your packet. And the, what it does is, it, it breaks down the position, the, the job description for each department, um, and how that would work out. It would be approximately 20 hours in the planning board office, 15 hours in the select board office, for a total of 35 hours, which would make the candidate eligible for benefits. It would be a union position, because there were already, the, both positions are already a union position, it would be a union position. So they would fall under the, uh, template, under the grades, um, the, um, salary grade for the union position. Um, initially, town council had, there were some ethical issues that town council was trying to help us work through. Um, and it, it was possible the position was not going to work.
Well, just to be cl, maybe ethical might, I mean, I know what you mean. If, there were concerns with complying with state ethics about being an employee in two different offices.
Oh, yes, sorry about that, yes.
Because it makes it sound weird, but, um, yeah, so, um, there were concerns about whether we could comply and have somebody work in those two offices.
So I, I just need to say, this, that's not what these words say. The words didn't say 20, 19, they said 22, and now we're talking about full-time, which I think is a great idea. Oh, so, um... So this is...
Oh, no, right, so...
This is... The, so the job description, um, I have to finish talking about it.
Okay.
So the position in the select board's office is, would be a temporary position until October 1. Um, it's, we, hopefully, we were going to put an article in for the warrant to make the position a funded position. Um, so it would be like a permanent, part-time funded position. Um, the reason that this, the bold information is there, the planning administrative assistant is already a funded position. So we have to put this wording in here. If the select board part-time position fails at town meeting to be, um, voted permanent, the position will then revert to a 22-hour position in the planning board office, which would make that person eligible for benefits. Again, we're trying to work, we're trying to work to keep people here and to not have revolving doors in the offices that have part-time positions.
So we're, we're making sure that in no event is the town planner's office going to be adversely affected by what we're trying to do with the other position?
Exactly, exactly. It's a matter, you know, we're, we're trying to make it better.
Yep.
And, and make it more, more something that a person would want to stay. Um, because it's a lot of work for us to lose a person, advertise, interview, hire, train. So, um, the less we do that, the better. Um, so anyway, um, we've put together the job description, and I did have another few conversations with our town council, who came up with this solution so that this resolves any... who came up with this solution, so that this resolves any, um, concerns regarding an employee working in two different departments in, within the town. Um, and it outlines the dis- job descriptions and the tasks in each, in each department. Um, this really, it really helps fulfill the need in both offices. Um, and it, it, looking at the numbers, um, it's much more, um, it's, it's a much more reasonable approach to getting a third person in the select board's office, without breaking the bank, so to speak.
No, and I, I, I think what I really like about this idea, and I thank, um, our accountant for coming up with it, is, um, I'd like the idea of that cross-pollination, uh, between the planner's office and the selectman's office. I'm not saying some of that doesn't already happen, but it's definitely going to happen if you have somebody who's in, and since both of those offices are working on grants together, you've got that connectivity between those two offices. Um, and the town planner is such a critical resource for the town.
Yes.
Of course, we like to think the board of selectmen are too. Um, and so I, I really like that idea of having somebody, um, that does both of those, and I also think that it's helpful for a succession plan. Um, not that Tony will necessarily wanna hear this, but, um, if we do end up, our executive assistant leaves, or we end up making that a full-time position, that would be an obvious place to have that person come from. So I think it, I think it checks a lot of boxes, but I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Did anybody have any questions or comments or concerns?
The only one I have, you mentioned the numbers workout, I, it's two part-time positions versus a, a full-time. The full-time's gonna be more expensive, right? I mean, it...
Well, not necessarily, see, the, so the part-time position in the planning board is already budgeted.
Right.
Um, so, it, the, the, the part-time position in, in the select board's office is not budgeted, so that's what we wanna go for. So half of that salary is already budgeted, so we don't have to come up with that. Um, it is adding another person to, um, eligibility for benefits. Our treasure collector always budgets for extra, for a new, if a new position were to come in for benefits. Um, so just to give some examples, I, I believe that the planner, the, the administrative assistant and the planner, they budget twenty-five thousand dollars for that position. Um, looking at, you know, the union, um, graphs, the part-time position in the select board's office, um, and you, if you combine those two positions, it would bring, only add about maybe twenty thousand dollars, um, to our budget, to cover fifteen hours.
Versus a full-time person, you know, cuz if we went the other avenue, which we may end up still finding that, you know, that's not sufficient. But I think, that's the other thing I like about it, is it allows us to test the waters and see, is a, is a part-time person sufficient to fill that gap that we know is there?
Yes.
Is that sufficient? It's, feels like it's more conservative approach to, to me, and then if we find out, you know, no, even once people have been trained and we've got that one and a half people working in our office, that's still not sufficient, then we could make a move to make that full-time, but I, I like that it's sort of an intermediary kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Weeks?
Yeah, I think, uh, at the end of the day, I'd like to be able just to fund it for, for the needs of the town, and not just, I think this is great. I'm gonna start off by saying that. I just wish we could just kinda say, "Hey, listen, we need two full-time people," so, cuz that's what, we, we were talking about that last time.
Yep.
Like, we need it, so why not just say, "Hey, everybody, we need this, we have to fund this," because we don't wanna, like, we, I think we had this conversation last time. We don't wanna find ourselves in a position where we're, you know, dropping something, or miss, or, you know, inadvertently cutting corners and, and making us more liable as a town, because we, we're, we're losing oversight, because no one has the bandwidth. And I don't wanna, you know, take two full-time positions and make it one semi-full-time position that's not really, it's gonna put a Band-Aid on the revolving door issue, and the reason why we have empty seats and vacancies is because we don't have enough staff. So I, I'd be, uh, you know, my only challenge to this is that it's not going far enough, although it's creative, and I'm glad all the Ts were crossed and everything. I really would advocate that we go full bore and ask for what we actually need. Um, but with the thing that's in front of me right now, the only thing that I have to bring up is, how attractive is this gonna look to applicant, where it says, "Part-time administrative assistant for the select board, town administrator, planning board, and town planner, temporary position, department, select board and town administrator," but it reports to the town administrator, select board, planning board, and town planner. It's a lot of seemingly contradictory statements, and a lot of who's on first type of stuff, and it seems like a very large position for thirty-five hours. So I just don't know, you know, would, are we setting ourselves up in the best interest to get a good person in the door that's not gonna feel overwhelmed or even want, and, again, it's all theoretical. You, uh, I could be a hundred percent wrong, you could have a thousand applicants right now, it just seems like a lot, it just seems like a lot.
A, a good point, but, um, and to clarify, right now, the planning assistant is part-time, and it always has been.
Right, we all, well, we've already determined that's, it's...
Well, no, I don't know, has Tony said he needs somebody full-time, right now?
Yes.
He has?
Well, they, they tried to get that position, uh, approved at town meeting for full-time, and it was voted down at town meeting.
Yeah, and when I was the, the chair of the planning board, we were advocating for a full-time too, we couldn't get one, so...
I'm just concerned, I hear what you're saying, um, I guess we could, um, say, "No, we wanna make both, you know, we want, both of us want full-time positions." Um, I, my, um, feeling is that that would go down in flames. Um, eh, eh, but I, but you could counter-argue, "We need it," so, you know, um, Mrs. Ray, thoughts?
I agree with both of those, we need it, and it would go down in flames.
I, I agree with you.
I, I agree with what you said about testing the waters, because I know how hard it's going to be to get a full-time position funded, never mind two
Right.
right now.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we need to, but let's, let's baby walk before we take that leap.
Yep, okay, and Mr. Hickey, thoughts?
I agree with Joe, it sounds like, you know, uh, there's nine different things you have to do. But when you first spoke, Joe, my first thinking was, um, the fire contract. Because of not having enough staff in the selectman's office, that was lost, now we're tabling it, because, you know, somebody left. So what we're trying to do is prevent a lost contract and prevent people from leaving. Why can't the title just be executive assistant, you know, to the town planner and board of selectmen? That's, it's, that's it, I mean, it's two jobs.
Is there a way to, to simplify this a little bit? Or is this because of union stuff?
This, right, this is how town council, um, suggested that it be worded, um, to cover both the base, all the bases, um, as far as union and any, um, ethics concerns with someone holding two positions.
Do they in fact report to the planning board? Or do they report to the town planner?
Well, I, yeah, I, I, that might have been a, um, I, I believe I should have added town planner and department as well, um...
Oh, okay, that makes more sense.
So, yeah, they, when they're up in the planning, they report to planning, and then when they're in select board, they report to town administrator and select board.
Okay.
But really, to you, see, that's the point I'm making, yes, each of you, to, you know, Mr. DeFrayis has the planning board, and you have the board of selectmen, but really, when it gets down to it, we're not the ones that on a day-to-day basis are giving them direction, nor is the planning board the one giving the, the planning board admin direction, it's Mr. DeFrayis and you. So I think if there's a way, if you could push back with legal counsel, to, cuz it does make it sound like you report to fifteen million people, and it's a part-time job, and we're not paying that much, but, you know, we're encouraging you to apply.
Long time.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I, and I get the need for it, when you see lots of words like this, you know a lawyer put it together, so I feel like that's, like, that's very clear. But it's just, who's gonna apply to this? And again, I, I know I'm, I'm probably gonna be wrong, and it's, you're gonna get a, a flux of people, but you might not, and it might be because of the wording, so then we can be a little bit proactive, maybe do a little parallel processing, look at this, put it out there, but simultaneously see if we can kinda clean it up and, and make it attractive, yet still, you know,
Can you just probe a little with legal counsel on that, whether we can Yeah. skinny it down a bit?
So, um, I, I was gonna talk about this in my town administrative report, but I, it's connected to this conversation. So this past Thursday, we, um, Mr. DeFrayis and myself interviewed candidates for the part-time administrative assistant position. Um, and in those, um, interviews, we also, um, just brought up, um, the idea, um, to those candidates that there may be another part-time position, um, in the town administrators and select board's office, and if that were the case, would they be interested in applying for that? All of them said yes.
Okay.
Um, there is one person that, um, the town planner would like to, um, offer the job to, and that person has said, "Yes, I'd like, I would be interested in, in this position as well." So we're working with the union, um, and town council, um, to come up with language and an agreement that, that will say, if we hire this person for this position, the administrative assistant for the planning board, um, and if the part-time position is approved for the select board's office, that that person would, we would not have to, um, post it in-house or outside, that that person would get this position as well. So we're working all of that.
And do we explain to the, or, you know, would we explain to this person, "It's temporary and contingent upon town meeting approving this"?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, that's why we have that language there as well.
It's full disclosure to everybody.
Oh, absolutely, they will be one hundred percent apprised of what the situation is. However, their position, the position in the planning board office, regardless of what happens at, at the October special town meeting, will still be a position of twenty-two hours, and they'll still be eligible for benefits at that point.
Okay, Mrs. Ray, thoughts? Okay, Mr. Hickey?
What is the problem with the union?
It, well, the issue is, um, under the contract, any in-house union position must be posted in-house for ten days. Um, so this position here, where it's kind of a new position, the union may require it to be posted in-house, which could then break up that, um, combination position, where we'd have now the administrative assistant in the planning board, but then someone else applying for the select board. Um, so that's why we just wanna make sure that that one, because this per- one position is making a full-time position for one person to be eligible for benefits. So we need to ensure the person in the planning board, the administrative assistant, is the person who is gonna be chosen for this position, to combine the position, to allow them full-time to be eligible for benefits.
Okay, so it's really not a problem with the union, it's just letting the union know that this is what you wanna do?
Exactly, and, and just get a side letter or the okay from the union, "Yes, we're okay with this, go ahead and proceed."
Just being proactive, to play the deck, you know?
Yeah, and, and, you know, um, being a part of a union, most of my adult life, you're gonna add another position, this is a win-win for the union.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yet another full-time benefit of the board.
We just wanna be transparent about, you know, our thought process and, and why we're doing what we're doing. We wanna be transparent about the whole idea about the position. It's unique, it's something that's not done very often, it, it's unique, so we wanna make sure we cover everything we think of could present a problem, to make sure it's a smooth process.
Any other comments or questions on this? Um, do you need us to make a motion and approve this, or?
Yes, please.
I want to change a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jarvis, it just occurred to me, you had your hand up when I just looked over at you.
Oh, it's, it's been, it's been answered.
I, I was hoping you weren't gonna say something which was gonna require us to reset our vote and...
I wouldn't do that to you.
We think it.
So, Madam Chair, we, Mr. Weeks, you, 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 um, you made the motion?
Yeah.
And who seconded, please?
Joe.
Okay, thank you.
There's a little pattern here. Sometimes they throw it to the other one, but...
And do we all vote five-zero on this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, that's great, and, um, committee updates, um, just in the interest of time, cuz we were posted for wage and personnel at eight o'clock, um, although there isn't anybody in the audience, except for Kurt, I assume you're not here specifically for the wage and personnel.
That's a bold statement.
I'm, I'm assuming, um, if so, he's, he gets the job because, just by sheer dint of perseverance. Um, anybody have anything, um, you know, that they wanted to give in the way of committee updates? Mr. Yale? Mr. Weeks?
Uh, just capital improvement, we met yesterday, got, um, a good introduction with all the new members. Very, very excited about the, the new committee that's, that's been, um, put together. Um, we still have just one question about the number of vacancies, but we found ourselves in the opposite problem that we had two months ago, which is, I only think we have one more vacancy left, where we have multiple people that actually wanna be part of the committee, which is fantastic, which means we did a really good job of trying to sell the importance of this committee. Um, so we might actually have a pretty decent problem of either a first-come-first-served, whoever gets, uh, puts in their application first, um, gets the seat, um, or we can go through and have multiple applications and do something that I've always wanted to do, which is actually do an interview process and get the best one, which I think would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Um, I know, right?
There is only one opening, so, yeah.
It's, it's just a great problem to have.
That's great, I'm excited for you guys, yeah.
But we, uh, we're putting, we're piecing together and reverse-engineering all the matrix stuff, we're looking at the website, trying to get everything up and running. Frank Melisi was elected the chair, and I'm excited about that, uh, because he's very enthusiastic, he's already been asked, asking a lot of great questions. Um, we are, we, we, we all had a sobering moment last night where we realized how close to the deadline we are for the August deadline of, uh, warrant articles, and, uh, as you know, we have to put the matrix together, we have to put our recommendations together for town meeting, and there's not enough, uh, weeks between now and then to really kind of, um, get a good process going. So I'm very grateful that we have the committee together, I'm very grateful, uh, for department heads. It would be important for you just to kind of follow up with us if you don't mind, but also any committee members that are watching this. Look in your mailboxes, because Frank, as of yesterday, put, um, the outreach letters, all the department heads, asking for their asks and their feedback. If you have, uh, if you don't have one, still fill it out and let us know, so we know that we can check all the boxes. It's super important that we get all these, uh, back, because the committee cannot meet unless we interview and discuss this. Uh, the, all the department heads and committees already know the, know the routine on this. But because August twenty-eighth is actually way closer than anyone I think realizes, uh, we still have to, uh, meet with everybody. We still have to update the matrix with the new, um, asks and the new input, and then the committee itself has to meet to set our priorities, and a lot of those things are gonna have to happen really, really fast. Um, so I would just ask that everybody just kinda help us out, um, and we will make a commitment that the next town meeting after October, we're gonna start way earlier, make sure that we get everything done, uh, but we do have a little bit of a time crunch, so
Yep.
that's, that's, that's basically it.
That's awesome.
Can I add?
I mean, not that you have a time crunch, but, yeah.
We mentioned about having extra people that wanna do it, is there a, a possibility of, of adding alternate positions to these?
I was gonna say, we could certainly do what, um, you know, the Conservation Commission does, which is, eh, have people, you know, in the event that there's, um, you know, uh, any kind of turnover or whatever, if people really feel so inclined, um, and because it's not a super, super heavy commitment, um, you could have people as, um, you know, as, like, eh, yeah.
Yeah, so we discussed this yesterday, and the reason why, eh, so, we discussed as a committee, and I don't wanna speak for Frank as the chair. W- you know, he's gonna accept that as a possible warrant article, which is why we wanna make sure we get through all these processes. Because this is gonna be the first year where the, the, the capital improvement committee is probably going to make, uh, a, a, a number of different, um, procedural types of articles, not just recommendations for capital planning, so...
That's amazing, I'm gonna state of shock, honestly.
No, that...
I think it's great.
We have a great committee, we really do.
Um, and, and for my part, um, Mrs. Green, I don't have any, um, updates, but I do have a question for you. The McQuan reuse, the last meeting that we had, um, we wanted to put a warrant article on in October um, to tear down McQuan, but we needed to have a refreshed, um, quote, because as we know, um, the quote we got might have been a bit of a back-of-the-envelope type of quote, I'm not really sure what the process and protocol was, and I just don't have a super, super confident feeling about it. Um, so I'm wondering, um, you know, as you're juggling those many balls, um, in the air and playing chief cook and bottle wash, um, whether you might be able to see if we could get a quote on that?
Um, well, the issue is, because of the size of the, the job, we have to go through a bidding process. Um, that means I have to develop a, um, a bid.
Could we ask Mr. DeFrayis to help with this, given the top, current constraints that we have?
Well, the only thing is, he does not know how, he, he hasn't been properly trained in developing a bid, um, and...
Is there anybody else in our office that, I, I don't mean our office, but...
There's really nobody
Okay.
basically, who can develop it. Um, that, that's, that's some of the downfall about, uh, being short-staffed in the office.
All right, you know what, why don't we take a powder on it for the October town meeting, and we'll look at it in May?
Yeah, i- if I can, if I can find another town that has something similar, a template out there, I can hopefully maybe mold it, but you can't, you don't wanna rush it.
You can basically go through and see if there was one in the, that Mr. McQ did?
I will look and see if I can find anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I mean, that, that's been, that's been, um, something that, hopefully, with getting a third person, that I'll be able to really concentrate on.
Yep. Um, okay, um, that's all I had, um, and I'm not meeting with the Economic Development Committee until, I don't know, sometime in August, so, um, it's been like herding cats a bit. Uh, but I do have an opening, if anybody out there would like to apply for economic development... But I do have an opening, if anybody out there would like to apply for Economic Development, we have one opening.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, we're going to get you popping on the highway.
I need, I need to get popping on the highway department. I'm, I get emails from him, but I'm not, I don't have any committee members.
Yeah, so we also have openings for the highway reuse committee, or whatever we're calling it, the highway feasibility committee.
We're putting that out with the announcements.
Yes. Yeah, Lisa, so do you mind updating on the announcements?
Yes, I'm actually putting that together right now to make sure I get it done.
Are you volunteering too?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
I need committee members.
This might be why we never have anybody join, join us, because we volunteer them for committees if they sit there.
One thing I would recommend, though, is, that might be useful, when you're doing the announcements, beginning of the meetings, it may be useful when there's a committee opening, to just say with the announcement when they meet, because maybe, half the websites don't say when they meet.
I agree, and I think people get overwhelmed with the thought of what the commitment is, when in fact, like, you wouldn't know, like, capital improvement, I mean, the current situation is, you know, a little, little different. But it's not heavy, heavy lifting, you know, it really, it is not, and similarly, like, Economic Development Committee, we meet months a month, it's like a couple hours, it's not super heavy lifting, this is not a lifetime commitment.
Right.
Yeah.
I think people don't know where they meet, what they're about, or when to go. So just having that information is basic, you know, they meet the second Thursday of every month, whatever, just post, just letting them know that, that's a huge step of information that is, for some departments, does not exist on the website.
Point well taken. That is something we're going to have to address, is the overhaul of that website. It's, it's, it needs help. I'm just trying to be kind. Okay, Mr. Hickey, we know you're going to be, be meeting with your people tomorrow, your de-racialization people.
Yes, that is tomorrow night, here, at 6:00 PM, if anybody wants to come. Other than that, I have nothing to report, except to say that Parks and Fields meets once a quarter. So, you know, although we have no openings, we only meet four to five ti, a fifth time would be an emergency. But, yeah, other than that, you know, nothing.
Okay. Update on strategic plan, and Ms. Green, this was, I think, the conversation we had with Ms. Donner, our consultant, regarding the offsite.
Yes, so Ms. Donner was hoping that we could possibly hone in on a date to have a, what should you call it, like a...
Should call it an offsite?
Offsite brainstorming, talk, you know, talking type of meeting, to talk about the survey, talk about what she's come up with so far for results.
And what were the dates she threw out there?
Oh, I apologize, I...
That's okay.
Have it updated?
I was hoping you would have it, but I can find it while we're, while we're talking, oh, retreat date.
She's calling it a retreat.
Retreat, retreat date. Makes it so much more appealing. Not an offsite all-day brainstorming, which would be an exhausting thought. So here are some dates that you guys can think about and let us know, Saturday, 10/29, Saturday, 11/19, or Saturday, 12/3. And just, just to level set, hopefully if you guys haven't already reached out to Ms. Donner to, to schedule an interview, you will do that, because as you remember, she is collecting all the feedback from the select board, from the department heads, that's going to be sort of form...
Is she the lady that I talked to on the phone?
Yes, you've already talked to her, you get the gold star. And she is going to be using all that information she's gleaned to kind of shape the conversation when we all get together at that retreat, and the retreat is going to be open to anybody can attend, it will be department heads, it will be us, and obviously Ms. Green, and hopefully our new staff, and we'll just be brainstorming about priorities and developing that strategic plan. So those are the three days she put out there, if you guys can just look at your calendars.
I prefer the first two.
You do?
The December one is...
And December's always just tricky, because everybody, and in fact, I, in the back of my mind, I'm not 100% certain about that, but I think that 12/3 would probably be the day of our holiday tree lighting festival, and I am not missing that for love of money. So, so, I have my priorities.
Is this a sooner rather than later type of thing, she wants to get us in, or the time, okay.
Yes, yes.
On the website, there's like dates that are pre-populated, you click on her calendar and pick it out.
Yeah.
No, I mean, as far as meeting with her, you meet her, or this?
Both.
No, I think, I think most of us have met with her.
Yeah.
I think we, did you, have you met with her?
No.
Okay.
Were you outing people, Ed?
Have you met?
Yeah.
You've talked to her?
Yeah.
And you didn't get a gold star?
No, that's what I'm, that's why I'm trying to put Ann get a gold star, we all met.
You get the silver, and we'll see who gets the bronze.
It was a Tuesday, and I grabbed it.
I see.
Ann was an early adopter.
I'll get that bronze. Laura, have you met with her?
Yes. I, I meet with her almost every week, and yes, I've met with her, yeah.
Oh.
That's all right, I'm sure he's working on it. So, you know what, she may have sent that to your town email address now that I'm thinking about it.
Oh, she did, I scheduled with her today.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay.
And if I may, we were on that subject, Ms. Donner came out to the office on Friday, and I met with her, and I brought her around town and showed her the highlights, our library, COA, I, I showed her the Botary Fields, the Highway, the McQuon.
How about Borridge?
We went to Borridge, we went to Light Control, so I...
You did Kiwani.
We did Camp Kiwani, she was mesmerized by Camp, how beautiful Camp Kiwani is. So I, I took her around town so she could really get a visual of, of the town.
That's awesome.
That was a very good, good meeting.
So can we, can we narrow in on a date that we want to just tally in, or do you guys need to check your schedules?
I'm always hesitant to turn on my cell phone.
Right, so 10/29.
I like that one.
I like 10/29. I do too.
Especially if it's an earlier...
I, I like 10/29, because I feel like you get into 11, you get into November, now you're into like Thanksgiving, and I don't know, all the holiday stuff. All right, so can, is there anybody who can't do the 29th of October?
What day are the weeks on?
Saturday.
You have to answer now for a whole different story, she's giving you a hard time.
Halloween is Monday. We're done.
Yeah. So what, what are we calling this thing?
It's, she's calling it Planning Retreat. I do feel that that's a bit of a stretch. I, I don't want people to think we're having spa treatments or something that day.
I know, I want a massage.
I'm sorry, that's not in the budget, Mrs. Ray, I'm sorry.
I want Lisa to give us all a tour before we, tour of the town.
All right, so we'll try for the 29th, and you'll let us know if you can't do that. How does that work?
It's going to be one second.
All right, so will you, will you tentatively tell her of that, and just let us know if you can?
29th, I will.
And as a backup, then we'll say the 19th, even though we're kind of not bullish on, about that, but, okay, great. And then I will entertain a motion on the one-day licenses as printed in our...
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And Ms. Green, town administrator report.
Okay, which, which will be very short this week. So I just, I would like to just update something that I had talked about last week in my town administrator report, and that was the meals tax. I had mentioned that there was a web, that the businesses in town could go, who are impacted by this, could go to the website and register. Our town clerk did hear from the DOR, and they will be sending notice out 30 days prior to the implementation date, so they should look for a notice around September 1.
That's kind of loud, like, 30 days doesn't really seem like a lot of notice, I'm sure that's what they're required to do under the regulations, but, you know, if you're a small business owner, that's not a lot of notice to implement something.
Well, apparently there's not a lot that the business has to do if they're registered correctly with the state. They, if, if there's any questions, they take that notice and they just go on to where the site tells them to go, and they just update one thing, so...
Okay.
I know some people were worried about it, but not to be worried, DOR is, is on it, and they will be getting the notice out.
It's not an issue like, I would think it'd be an issue with their electronics, you know, their, their computers, that they have, they're going to have to adjust that, and there might be people using older software.
Yeah, and I would think you're going to have to probably, you know, probably won't take that long, but tell your staff so they can explain when people get the bill, what is this, what the heck is, you know, this extra charge, that type of thing, even though it's a small amount. Yes, Ms. Green, sorry, anything else?
Nope, that's okay, so I just wanted to, we had our end of the year, fiscal year, June 30th, our office was successful with compiling all year-end bills, getting those all paid prior to the end, there were some that came in after, we successfully encumbered those, town accountant gave me the okay today to go ahead and pay those bills tomorrow. So hopefully for October town me, special town meeting, we will have very few, hopefully, last year's bills, unless we get something from, that the companies didn't send us. So I wanted to report that, and then my last one was just updating on the strategic plan and give her a tour of the town, so.
All right, great, thank you so much. Ms. Green?
I have a, I have the calendar in front of me, the 26th, it's supposed to be a highway department update today.
I wonder whether we did not tell Mr. Sharv. Ms. Green, did we circulate our approved select board meetings to everybody so that the appropriate department heads could know that they're expected to come to certain meetings?
I will do that tomorrow.
Okay, great, thanks. And we'll just, yeah, ask him when he might be ready, and we'll just pop him on, you know, I don't, you know, I don't...
Yeah, I'll contact him.
Yeah, just, thanks for pointing that out. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we're going to go to wage and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great.
Great, everybody.
All right, thanks. Oh, it's not executive, it's not, it's not executive.
You're okay with all of us and...
Unbelievable.
All right.
Next time, I'll save the whole day.
All right, your loss there, Kurt. All right, I'm going to call to order the wage and personnel meeting Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 8:00 PM, starting at 8:23 PM, and we're going to do a pledge of allegiance.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So we have one thing on our agenda today, and that's salary discussion for executive assistant position. Ms. Green, walk through that, please.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board. With your packet tonight, or the wage and personnel, I, I did, I was able to put a graph together of some of the towns that I was able to get information on as far as what their salaries are. We had gone through, prior to this, we had gone through some of the towns with populations and what the staffing was in the select board's office. This here will give you some information on what the salaries are for executive assistants, what their hours are, and then I broke it down to their annual and then their hourly rate. Our rate in Hanson, as you can see, is considerably lower than many, most of our neighbors in responding towns. And I didn't go into such detail as looking at budgets for each individual town, looking at job descriptions, I, I mainly put together hours of work, hourly in your annual and your hourly rate. If I was given some information that was helpful, I did put it in the remarks, as you could see, the Abington administrative, executive assistant does not attend their meetings. As you can see, the Whitman executive assistant, the, the rate that she is paid includes a recording secretary amount, so she's paid an additional amount to record and generate meeting minutes. So this will give you an idea of that, and I did also speak with our town accountant, and he agrees that the salary that we pay is very low, that he is comfortable in what he has seen for the, some of the town, other towns that he also works with, is in the range of, of about $36 an hour, is what he has seen, and he's comfortable with us moving, basically being able to move the salary between a $32 range and 60, $36 range per hour. Of course, that's based on qualifications and experience.
Okay, and so, through you, Mr. Chair, so the 36, what, what did we post that job for? Did it include that range?
No, it didn't. It included basically our current rate, which I believe was 28 to $32 an hour.
Okay. So the current applicants don't know that we're looking at this...
That's correct.
Okay, all right, well, that's interesting, that would be a pleasant surprise. I wonder if we would have gotten a different pool.
The higher range.
Yeah.
Well, we did get, we did get a good pool of applicants.
We really did.
With what we, what we, with what we advertised, we did get a good group, a good pool.
Yeah.
What's our range right now?
32.
32, okay. All right, I was just doing the math on this, it looks like if we come out, if we do this, just take the average of all these numbers, it comes out to $66,000, which comes out to just under $32 an hour.
How many dollars?
And that's the average.
32.
That's the average.
That's the average of all the salaries here.
I was thinking 32 was all the average.
And I took outliers that were not 35 or 40 hours.
Right.
So it's, according to the, if we just take the base average excluding Berkeley, because that's just the, that's just an outlier, unless you want to prorate it, just, you know, you can do that if you wanted to, but...
Yeah, that's a strange number, isn't it?
Yeah, and you, you can just, you could do the math on it, but it, I don't think it's worth the, worth the extra steps, it was just, it's $66,000 at 35 hours a week, which is also the average of all the hours here, and that comes out to 30, 3170 an hour. That's just the average, not a range. So are we looking to set a range for this?
Yes.
Yes.
So as long as we're, I mean, I would just make the recommendation, if, if people are interested, that the range, the range doesn't mean we have to pay the range.
No.
The range just gives us a cushion, just, this is just for...
You don't have to pay the range, like, you can pay below it?
No, you can, within the range.
No, no, you'll, you'll go to the highest, you don't have to, if you, if we say $100,000, we'll have to pay $100,000.
Right.
All right, okay, yeah.
Technically, the range could be a dollar to $200,000, you just pay whatever. I would just say we do a, a pretty healthy range so that we can try and attract talent, just again, keeping in mind, we don't have to pay on the high end or the low end.
It gives us versatility.
Would you raise the lower bar of what we do for the open position?
I do, that's my therapeutic, I'll start making jewelry for you.
That's at the will of the board, really, I just think it's really whatever, whatever you folks really want to do.
What's the range right now, Lisa?
20... 20, 28 to 32, so 32 is the higher range, is the highest range, and that's, that's where our, that's where the former executive assistant was.
Didn't we go through this, didn't we go through some kind of wage vote at the town meeting?
Not for this position.
Not for this position.
Oh, well, what you did was, you did the bylaw, the, the bylaw that this is, and And those, most of those wages are only to include the 2% increase for what they currently have. This wasn't actually to increase the wage.
So, from my perspective, the low end stays the low end, because that's just the low end. The, our, our high end has become the average of what everyone else is averaging.
32?
Yeah, so we, we are, our high end on the average from Melissa's.
Today?
Yeah, it's 32. So, our, 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 the average of all these towns has become our high end. So, I think we have to, in my opinion, react accordingly. So, maybe it doesn't make sense to increase the range to what, in the 70s? I'm seeing 70,000 here. I'm seeing 72,000 on the high end.
Actually...
Are we doing hourly, or are we doing?
The range is 36.
Salary.
We're up in the range of 32 to 36.
I'd rather do it hourly.
You've got 75,000.
Some of these have 40 hours, whereas it's 35. But, Joe, one thing you said, and you've said it a couple of times now, average, average, average. Again, I'll use the word proactive. Why are we always average? Why can't Hanson be above average?
Right.
So, and this is why I like your thinking on this, is that if the low end is going to be 28, and we're going to keep it that way, why can't the high end be 36? Why can't it be above average, or 38?
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, so I just did the math on that.
And the 38 doesn't hurt, because we can still give somebody 30, if that's what they're worth. And we, but we can bump them up to 36 or 38 or whatever, if, if...
Yeah. I, I just think, you know, as long as the town accountant can back up the high end within, within the budget, if it comes down to that.
Well, the town accountant said 36.
Yeah, so we're good.
He's, he, yeah.